Sixteen, City Council Work Session. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. And the first thing on the agenda is we're gonna do a little discussion on the snow removal on sidewalks along Nineteenth Street Northeast. And Shane, I'm gonna just kinda let you visit about that. I know that there was some concerns about snow, and a lot of them were done very nice, and others weren't, and I'll let you just handle it.
Yeah, um, thank you, Mayor. The, uh, letter that was sent out was based on a few complaints of non-compliance with removing of snow in the new area north of, on North Nineteenth Street, primarily between Tenth Avenue and Fourteenth Avenue. But the rest of that did have some sidewalk intermittent, but we did fill in most of those gaps. And subsequently, we sent out a letter kinda reminding people up there that hadn't had sidewalks previously of what the ordinances say there is, that they were heard, and that they probably wouldn't assign the easements if, if they'd known that they would've had to do the maintenance. And so they've asked for time to come and speak with the council with regard to this issue, and I guess, you know, as far as staff is concerned, we're, we're following the policies that were set forth by the city councils of past and have continued to enforce that policy accordingly, so.
Well, I guess, guys, I don't know if anybody else got any phone calls. I know I got maybe a couple of calls and ran them up to Shane. Shane, you had discussion with a couple of folks up there. Uh, I think there are, there is some confusion where, uh, you know, it's, it's in the right of way that the sidewalks are put in, is that correct? Can you explain that?
Yeah, the sidewalks, because that was a project that had federally funded money in it, in other words, it came through the state, through our SDP system, they are required to have sidewalks installed on projects that utilize that type of monies, so that's why the project included completion of the vacant segments of sidewalk. And that leads us to completing the ADA requirements too, you know, handicap ramps at all the intersections and making sure that that's accessible to all, people of all abilities, so. I guess, any other questions?
Shane, when you say the ordinance was enforced accordingly, wha- what, what did that act, what do you actually mean by that?
Okay, the, the ordinance says that within twenty-four hours of a snowfall, the residents need to clear the snow and/or ice from the surface of the sidewalks. We all, all the citizens of Watertown fall under that same category. If you have a sidewalk, it's your responsibility to remove the snow and maintain it if there's ice, et cetera. And the, it does give them twenty-four hours after the snow stops to get that task completed. And it's such a daunting task that we really, as a city, give them a lot of leniency because we only address those issues on a complaint basis, because we don't have enough staff and people to kinda chase that dog around town and, and make sure that everybody's doing it. But, so, we kinda do, uh, only do it on a, enforce that ordinance on a complaint basis. And really, in this case, we weren't enforcing anything. We felt that because they had new sidewalks, that we were just sending them a reminder of what the responsibilities are. So, there really hasn't been any enforcement action taken.
Shane, how much of, how much of that snow that gets put on there is from the trucks that we have that puts boulders on that, on there, so you cannot remove it? I mean, I'm just thinking about some of the stuff that comes on there. Do we push stuff onto that sidewalk when we blade the road?
There is a potential that that happens. If, if the snowy amount is enough that it would create a larger windrow, I would say that there's a good chance of that happening.
You wanna come on up to the speaker also, Rob?
Shane, can you do me a favor? Can you put, uh, go on the system and pull this area? I wanna think, I wanna, I wanna make sure that we're all talking about exactly the same places and for the same reasons, 'cause we really have a couple of different situations taking place up there. We have sidewalks that work, um, on the back lots of a single-depth lot, and then we also have sidewalks where, where it's a, people have bought the front lot and the back lot and, along Nineteenth Street. And in my mind, we really are only talking about the single-dePTH sidewalks, the lots, I should say, where the sidewalks were put into their, technically in their backyard. I think, and I do think we have to distinguish between those two scenarios, 'cause they are different.
Well, they, they are different, and there are, I don't know, probably, it looks like a little over a dozen properties that have that, and primarily that is between Twelfth Avenue and Tenth Avenue.
Where they have the single lot depth.
Right, on both sides of the street has that situation.
Okay, so, this is my point, and is, so, nothing north of it, nothing south of it, of those two points, Twelfth and Tenth, are single-lot depth lots, is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, I think we should be ruling those out of this discussion, because those are sidewalks that are on a, a lot frontage. And this two-block segment, to me, is the only issue that bears our discussion.
Well, I disagree, 'cause all sidewalks have the same requirement.
I'm not talking about the requirement, I'm talking about who does it, Shane. The issue that we're discussing tonight is, and we're gonna make a decision on who really should be doing this.
No, no, let's, let's, we're not gonna make a decision tonight. As you know, this is a work session, and there's no, there's no decisions made.
We are having a discussion on that, correct?
Well, I, I get it, we're having a discuss, you said decision made, not a deci, no, I just, I just wanna make sure that we understand that.
Okay, just to be clear, Councilman Danforth, every foot of sidewalk in the public right-of-way has the same requirement, whether you have, I happen to live on a corner lot, I have two sides of my lot that I have to remove snow on, and that's my responsibility, and I have to do that. This is a dissimilar situation, but it happens that they have sidewalk on two pors, sides of their lot, one on the front and one on the back, and we're treating them the same whether, whether or not there's a, a side yard involved or not, so.
Okay. Why are we having this discussion? What's the purpose of the discussion?
That's what I'm trying to figure out, too. If you have a sidewalk, clean it.
Okay, and I disagree with you in this scenario, Brad, I really do. I think the fact that this development was done at a time when, uh, I'm not sure if there was ever a planned sidewalk within this stretch of a, of a single-dePTH lot, I think that's what make this different. We don't have these situations very much within the community. I don't think a consideration here sets a precedence, 'cause in the future, if we were doing this now and this land wasn't developed yet, then the people that buy it, we'd be working with the developer, and we would be, they would know that there is a frontage and there's a back area that they've gotta be dealt with. The owners that buy the lots would know that going into it, and even if the sidewalk didn't go in then, we would probably use our tool that we have today, which is the waiver to write to protest, is that correct?
Most likely.
Right, and so there would be a, a system for knowing and handing off that requirement going into the future. I don't think any of these people would ever have known or that, uh, that there was that obligation here, a requirement to put in a backyard sidewalk, because it's, technically it's two frontages, is really what we have.
So, the, the state required this, or are they obligated to do it?
I'm not talking, Brad, about the si, the, about the sidewalk itself, I'm talking the obligation of the maintenance. They didn't, they didn't pay to put it in.
That's what I'm saying, are they, is the state obligated to do it?
To do what?
To clean it. It was a federal government requirement.
Well, I think Obama would probably allow it.
I agree with that.
No, it was a requirement to put it in. That's where those funds came, and I think that, that, Brad, in my opinion, I think that's a different issue than what we have today.
Who's, whose responsibility is it to mow the lawn, along the right-of-way and along the sidewalk and along the backyard? Property owner? You know, and, and I gotta halfway agree with Mike, because it's kind of a, a bad situation for these property owners that have lived there all their life, but I, I don't, just don't think we can forget about mowing lawn, are we gonna wait, or, excuse me, shoveling sidewalk? Are we gonna wait until a pedestrian gets killed walking down the street because somebody didn't shovel their sidewalk? I don't want that on my conscience, just because we thought it wasn't a good deal.
I agree.
So, Rob, give us a little history, when they, when they plow the streets, is the grader or the big truck, is it pushing it all over there on that side? How much space is there between there?
I think...
It's right, almost level.
I'm sorry, come, come on up and, and tell us, tell us your name and speak on the, then we can, we can all hear you.
I'm Jeannie Andress, and the way the sidewalk is put in, first of all, I was one that was told very, 'cause this was a concern before I signed the easement. And I said, "I will not be able to maintain that sidewalk." And they said, "Well, don't worry about it." You know, if we were to maintain that sidewalk, we should've been told upfront. "If you sign this easement, you will be responsible for maintenance of that sidewalk." That didn't happen. But the way the situation is, the backyard is, if we get a pretty decent snow, five to six inches, I can't get through my backyard. Even if I could, you couldn't get a snow blower through there if the snow, 'cause I've got a hedge and quite a few trees, so it all piles up in the backyard. Okay, anybody, we're in the middle of that block, so the only way we could get to that street, and sometimes I can't even get there in twenty-four hours, is if my, if Twelfth Avenue isn't, or Twelfth Avenue and Eighteenth Street isn't open. So, okay, so, in the meantime, one of the first streets that are plowed is Nineteenth Street. And they, the, the snow plowing, it has to, there's no way the snow plow can go down Nineteenth Street without putting that big, heavy ridge of snow right on that sidewalk. And a snow blower, I don't think could even go through it. You'd have to park on Nineteenth Street, which would be very dangerous, there's no place to pull in there at all. So you'd be parking on Nineteenth Street, unloading whatever you had to unload, and then what are you supposed to do with your vehicle while you're shoveling the sidewalk? And you couldn't just shovel it. We've got three people on that street that are in wheelchairs. We've got an eighty-two-year-old lady, I can't handle a snow blower, I hire my snow blowing down in the front of my yard. Okay, so, most of us are older people on a fixed income, and we did not request that. We cooperated with the city when they said, "We need to have you sign this easement so that we can get the federal funds, 'cause we have to have the sidewalk." So we cooperated with you, and now we're asking for your help to help us figure out how in the world we're ever gonna clean that sidewalk.
I think that's the biggest, I think that's the biggest thing is, try to get, I think that's the biggest thing, is all try to get together and try to figure out how we can get this done, instead of quick pointing fingers at each other and, and, you know, it is a tough situation, you can't get around the block to get to your sidewalk.
We can't get around the block.
But us as a city can't just say, "No, we're just gonna do it for you," because we don't do it to rest of the city, so.
You do it on Fourteenth Street.
Where at?
The other thing, you, you do it in other places, I know you do.
I know we do it along eighty-one, because that's where the plows push it up on the sidewalk.
And, and if the plow can come along and pile all that real hard stuff on there, how are you gonna clean that off? And if it's ice, if you have an ice storm, how are you gonna clean that off?
Part of the problem might be that we are, our trucks or our blades are going too fast along that stretch, and it, you know, the sidewalk is close, um, to the back of the curb, and it might be pushing some of that on the sidewalk. And what we probably need to do is slow it down through that two-block stretch to keep that from happening.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause we can't do what we do on eighty-one. We cannot put a blade up on top of the grass and to the sidewalk, we can't do that.
Right, and on eighty-one, we have curbside sidewalk, and when we clear the, the highway, the only place we can put it is on a sidewalk, so we come back after we've gotten the roads cleared out, and then we haul that snow out on that, it is...
You know, I think, hopefully, we're kinda done with the winter right now, you know, you never, there could be a lot of snow coming. But I, I think what we should do, Rob, is maybe you and Shane, and we'll get a couple of these council guys on there, and we'll, see if we can't work out something that is good for both parties, you know, 'cause there are things we can do.
I would invite any of you, all of you, to come up and take a look. I mean, our sidewalks right now are just covered with sand from the snowfall, okay?
Well, I think everybody's sidewalks are covered with sand right now, as, as well as my entire boulevard is full of sand. And Rob, I'm holding you against that.
And I would, I would invite any or all of you to come up there before you make a decision, and take a look at exactly what the situation is up there, and how difficult it would be for us to have to clear those sidewalks, it would be next to impossible.
There, there's gotta be some kind of resolution that we can all agree on, that's gonna be good for all parties.
I think...
But just to say that we're gonna do it isn't that situation.
Right, and we can help by slowing it down and...
Well, and that, if we can figure out something, but I, I think I agree with the mayor, it's just the fact that we need to get some of these people at the table and, and some of our people at the table and, and resolve this. I, I don't wanna see the fact that when somebody gets killed and then we're all sitting back here saying, "God, why didn't we do something about it?"
The city lot is right next to our lot, I'm about a block from the water tower. We're dealing with that whole issue too. Okay, so, when they, uh, they have a motorized vehicle that clears that snow in front of the city property, is there any way that motorized vehicle could come on down that stretch that's impossible for us to clean and clean that off too? Is there any possible way that...
Rob, is it, you were the utilities, does it?
Utilities.
Right, come on up, ma'am, and state your name and...
My name is Darlene Meester. We've lived...
Darling, if you'd, if you'd use the microphone, we're gonna...
Right here.
There you go.
My name is Darlene Meester, and we've lived on Eighteenth Street for twelve years. When we purchased this property, we were informed that the sidewalk, and we had sidewalk, would be cleared by the city, and for twelve years, it has been cleared by the city. Now you put in a new sidewalk, and it is not cleared. Now, I think this is a discrimination against us.
Explain to me, 'cause I didn't think we cleaned any private side, show me where your house is on Eighteenth Street.
From, from tenth, okay, from Tenth Avenue, where it comes across, you know, and then there is no street going across Eighteenth.
Blow that up a little bit, Shane, so we can see it a little better, so she can explain...
The area she's talking about is, the water tower property ends right here, and this, this is the old picture, so this shows that the old sidewalk was actually part of the shoulder of the road.
Okay.
And, so then, so then Rob probably did have his folks extend the plow past the shoulder just because, just similar to eighty-one, they were piling something that was three feet deep and, you know, hard as a rock.
That's considered, that would be like a curbside sidewalk there, it was...
Just like Highway eighty-one.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's why we did clear that off, we just put the blade right over and push it a little further.
Right, and the difference between this and what's there now is there's a three-to-five-foot boulevard of grass between the curb and the sidewalk, generally speaking, there's, there's space anyway.
No, not on yours, I understand that, it's just right there.
And then, um, because we weren't able to push that sidewalk back to the right-of-way like we normally would have it, because we still tried to maintain or had to maintain somewhat of a ditch section in there, I mean, so, that, that's why the sidewalk is located where it is, and...
Sure, well, I think we need to do something. I know, we don't want people walking on the street, 'cause that's, that's not what we want, and we don't want, you know, we wanna have the clean sidewalk, so, let's do that. I'll, Rob, you and Shane get together, we'll get a couple of folks from the, from that area and get them involved, plus a couple of council people, and I'll trust that you just put it together, Rob, and, yeah.
Can I ask you before you pave one?
Okay, 'cause...
My name's Dave Felch. I live directly east...
Say your name again.
Dave Felch.
Okay.
I live just east of the water tower.
Okay, yep.
If you were to drive down Nineteenth, the people that shovel, there's no cinders on their, on their pavements, okay? The ones that didn't, they're completely covered with cinders. We're, we're gonna be responsible for clearing Nineteenth, is how we see it, okay? Now, understand, just south of us, the new section of pavement was put in, Eleventh Avenue, was it, Kathy? Three doors north of your house, there's a real low spot in, in the sidewalk. It's a, it's a ice rink every morning. The snow melts in the day. The south property on that corner, there's a big, big dip in that new pavement.
And I think that was, if I'm not mistaken, I kinda heard, is there not some purpose to that, Shane, to drainage?
Yeah, we, we were, we did struggle to get some great, the correct grading in there, and that is something that the city has decided, we wanted to see how, how it would've functioned, so we're, we're, we've evaluated that this year, and we'll be looking at, of potential remedies here this spring, so.
Okay, oh, very good. I, I, we'll do that, Rob, I'll trust you get that put together, and, and we'll move forward on that. All right, guys?
Let me ask a question. Is it Rob's decision, or do, are they making a recommendation to you or this council?
It would be a recommendation to the council.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, I just wanna get a recommendation where you would, where you'd come at, if there is funding involved, where the funding comes from, things such as that.
I think that this situation is a little different as it go down there, so I think it's not like one, one option is gonna be the only way that that works, there's probably gonna have to be some combination of, and some people don't have a problem with taking care of the sidewalk, and that's fine, but I, yeah, I, I know people got stuck in a pickle here, that wasn't, that they didn't know that was happening, so.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Yes, sir. Something different?
Jamie Torstensen, I live on eleven eighteen, Eighteenth Street Northeast. So as I understand, the state, federal funding put in this ADA?
That is correct.
Sidewalk?
Yes.
What I'm asking is, on, on the west side of Nineteenth Street, we laid a public access route that's sixty inches wide, and on, or the western side, my side, we have a forty-eight inch side, and on the eastern side, they have a sixty-inch. What's the reasoning? If it's a clear width of path, unobstructed, was it utilities? The power poles? 'Cause we relayed that, they built that up, raised my road, what, maybe a foot to sixteen inches, the pick mark's still on the pole. If that's a continuous path, and if you read into ADA guidelines, which I took the liberty of doing, I don't know necessarily if we're in law, where you have to have the passing lanes every two-hundred feet minimum for sixty-inch by sixty-inch by sixty-inch bypass lane, on my side. So are we following, are we following ADA guidelines, I guess, is my only awareness? I just wanna bring awareness to it.
Sarah, you were kinda the, the engineer on this entire road, you got the easements, you got this done, are we within compliance on this?
I'm not positive we are with the...
Okay, and we can look at, you can look at that, this probably isn't the place or time to look at the ADA compliance. It's, it's a good point to bring up, though, so that we can look...
I just wanna make awareness of it to the council, come up there, I think my neighbors on my side of the street, what we're designing is, or arguing, is our accessibility to get to that sidewalk, when we're landlocked in there. We have a one-four and a one-five grade slope that we have to access to get to that, or we have to go all the way around the street at our expense to clear that path. Just comments.
Okay.
The ADA requires at least a four-foot wide sidewalk, but they recommend five. In our community, we have a lot of four-foot sidewalks, but we, we generally put in five-foot sidewalks wherever we can when we do a new project. In this case, the power poles were in the way, and so we had to narrow it down to four feet. But I think that the passing lane is only if it's a three-foot sidewalk, but I'll look into that.
Okay.
It was actually, um, a consultant that designed it, and the state reviewed it, and we reviewed it. If we miss something, we can correct that by putting in a, a pad where wheelchairs can pass, if we need to.
Okay, well, thank you.
I guess, I'm just bringing it up, if we have to be compliant, I want the city to be compliant before it's sued.
Right, got it. Okay, guys, let's move on. Uh, we're gonna move to the presentation of the Revised Stormwater Management Program and E N R report, and Sarah, I understand you're gonna be handling this for us.
Yes. I'm Sarah Karen, Assistant City Engineer, and I'm gonna go over our Watertown's Stormwater Management Program and the annual report. The Clean Water Act has stormwater regulations, which the City of Watertown must comply, and two things, basically, we have to have a written stormwater management program, and we do, and we have to submit an annual report to D E N R telling how we're complying with the stormwater management program and the D E N R regulations. So we do that every year. Last year, in our 2014 report, the D E N R found a couple of deficiencies, and they asked us to address them by revising our stormwater management program and to explain the revisions in our 2015 annual report, so I'll explain those things to you. Our stormwater management program is a written document, which was revised last year as well. Very little is changing this year, but the, the deficiencies that D E N R noted were that we need to develop a compliance schedule to address deficiencies in our program, and I hadn't listed any compliance schedule, because I felt that our program was not deficient. So, they pointed out, our one deficiency is an element of the illicit discharge program that we aren't addressing, and so I did put in the program under illicit discharge, uh, schedule for us to come into compliance with that requirement, and I'll show you that in a minute. They also said that the city's program must include measurable goals, and we must report progress on our measurable goals. We have measurable goals on almost every section, some of them are, it's just really hard to, um, come up with something you can measure as to how you're, like, public education, how do you measure if we're having effective public education? Um, that's a difficult one, so, measurable goals, that's a, that's a big deal with all communities, we're all struggling how to actually come up with realistic and measurable goals. But I went through the program, and in most cases, the goal was there, they just didn't see it, so I highlighted it in bold, capital letters, "Goal." And, um, one per year, so, and then in the annual report, I reported whether or not we achieved that. In most cases, we did achieve it. I will admit, the illicit discharge program did have a part of it, um, which we weren't addressing, which is keeping that illicit discharge program, which is its own document, thirty pages, standard operating procedures for dealing with reports of pollutants being put into the stormwater system. One of the elements of our standard operating procedure for illicit discharges is that we have to have a method of reviewing and updating our illicit discharge program. And we really didn't have that written into our standard operating procedure, so that's a new goal that wasn't in here before, and I just assigned the date of December 2016 that we will have addressed how to review and update our illicit discharge program. So, basically, there are six minimum control measures, uh, which the city and all cities our size must have in their program. We have to do public education and outreach, and some of the things that we do are the booth at the home show, um, we, we have outreach to classes and that sort of thing. The second minimum control measure is public involvement and participation, which is similar, and we, we actually do try to measure what the public knows by having a quiz at the home show booth. Maybe some of you've taken that quiz, and we tweak the questions on it every year a little bit, but basically, we're trying to, to see where we need to focus our public education efforts. So that's minimum control measure two. The third minimum control measure is illicit discharge and detection, and as I stated, we have a whole book of standard operating procedures for what to do. We have a, a place on our website where people can send an email to us to tell us if they think somebody's dumping in the stormwater system, and we need to check annually when we're cleaning up or mowing... And we need to check annually when we're cleaning up or mowing and we, we have procedures for that. If we do find an illicit discharge, our standard operating procedure has forms for us to fill out and steps for us to take to identify it and correct it. The fourth minimum control measure is construction site stormwater runoff control. And that's for the, um, sites that are under construction with land disturbing activities. We have a whole manual on how to deal with erosion control on construction sites. And everyone that gets a building permit signs off that they understand they have to control erosion and sedimentation. And that's part of that measure.
Sarah, can I ask you a quick question on that? Even though we have this control measure in there and, and everybody that takes out a build permit has to go and abide by that measure, what do we do as a city to watch that measure so that we know that it's properly done?
We don't have a big staff and so when, when we have inspectors out doing other things on our own projects, we do drive by our project sites. The, um, urban planner engineer too is on top of development. That person reviews development plans. And so, is in the loop, he reviews the stormwater management program, plans that every site needs to have. So, he goes out randomly and checks them, but we don't have a schedule that we do that.
And I understand that. I guess, I, I would look at that and, and think that maybe there's some areas that are more high, I mean, we should, we should, we should watch them better than other areas per se, is, is I guess what I'm saying. And maybe we need to, maybe we need to up our, our game on that a little bit.
Sarah, Sarah, I'm sorry to interrupt you and maybe you're going to get to, I mean, I'm assuming this, this includes the, the lake properties as well that are, have to be in compliance?
Absolutely.
It begs the question, in light of what you just told the mayor now, at some point, it's the only point, it's probably going to come back to us again. That would be an example of something that would have to.
Actually, it's back. We just got an application.
Okay. But, but again, that, that wouldn't, this would cover that as well then?
Right, and, and this minimum control measure four is construction sites. Large construction sites have an additional post-construction requirement and that's minimum control measure number five. We also have, separate from our erosion control manual, a post-construction manual, which talks about how are we going to control erosion and sedimentation pollution in the runoff, um, in perpetuity on a site? So, detention ponds, water quality facilities are required on all sites which create more than an acre of impervious surface. And there's a whole separate manual for dealing with those. That's minimum control measure five. And the last minimum control measure is pollution prevention and good housekeeping for municipal operations. And we have numerous municipal operations. We have the yard waste collection site, we have the street shop, we have the cemetery, we have our snow sites. Each one of those sites has its own unique plan for controlling the pollution that might be generated at that site because of those kind of operations, storing salt, having leaves that are decomposing. Those have special, um, water quality issues associated with them, so they each have their own manual. And these are not new things. These are things that we were required to have, um, back in, you know, when we first adopted our stormwater program. So, quickly, that's, that's our program. And then if you keep scrolling, um, the annual report is also in there. And at the council meeting later, we're going to ask first for the council to approve the revised stormwater management program, which really only has that one change with the illicit discharge. And then the goals are highlighted. Those are the changes. And, and then also authorize the mayor to sign our annual report that we need to submit to the D E N R by March tenth. So, you'll get those actions later.
Perfect. Has anybody got any questions on the stormwater management program?
Sarah, I assume these are relatively standard amongst different cities, but our plan, if it does differ in what ways from other cities?
Actually, we've asked that question over and over of the D E N R. And, um, they've been reluctant to tell us how other cities are complying with the rules because they don't want to have us doing what other cities are doing just because that's what other cities are doing. They want us to have a unique plan that's adopted by our community. But, um, we, we have asked the D E N R to make that information more public for us. And, um, I think a group is going to be formed soon where we'll have better communication and see. Because I want to know if there's something that's working in another city that, that is acceptable as a means of measurable goal, for instance. We can do that too. I mean, it, you don't want to reinvent the wheel over and over. We initially hired C H Twoam Hill to come up with our compliance plan. So, I feel very confident that Watertown has a good, solid plan.
Well, thanks, Sarah. And I think some of the best defense that we have is, is the public out there seeing these things and, and they do tell us. I know there's areas where we've seen wetlands filled in that, that shouldn't be. So, I think what I'm going to do is skip number four for now and slide to number five since you're, since you're right there, Sarah, if you're good with that.
Sure.
And that's, um, that's the update on the Big Sioux flood control study.
Right. Okay. I asked Brad Johnson to come here. He was on the council, um, a long time for, and, and during the time when the council took action initially that started the whole process for getting flood control.
Right.
And, um, in case I screw up, he can, he can tell you about.
If I, if I may, I think part of what we're after here tonight is that, um, you know, we were instructed, the, the Corps came back to us and asked us to do this feasibility study. We agreed to do the feasibility study and then, of course, it went through the, through the legislature to get some dollars for us. They actually went through the, the process and I think we were awarded, I don't have it in front of me, two hundred and twenty-five thousand some odd dollars that will be coming to the city of Watertown. There was a cost of five hundred thousand dollars for that study. What this study will do is it will really tell us where we're at today and where we should be and, and what's going on. I don't know if I want to go back into the history of the entire process. But I, I think if you can just explain to us how we got to, where we're at right now.
Okay.
You know, the study to get that finished, the dollar amount, where we're looking for dollars.
Okay. Essentially, what needs to happen tonight is the mayor needs to be authorized to sign a letter to send to D E N R to ask the D E N R, the swarms program, to have a contract with us for moving forward with the grant they gave us. So, um, we did get a grant for two hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is half of the local share for completing the feasibility study. And we can't move forward with a, a project for flood control for Watertown until this feasibility study is completed. It's been open and on the books for years. And the city keeps coming back and saying, yes, we want to complete it, yes, we want to complete it. So, we're getting really, really close. Unfortunately, the Army Corps of Engineers can't do any work unless Congress authorizes them. They're a federal agency and they are not authorized at this time to move forward. But we do have this grant money that's available from the state, which will help us meet our local share for completing that feasibility study. And, and should the, um, federal government direct the Corps to move forward, we'll be ready.
Right, and we were actually asked by the federal government to bring this forward to do the million-dollar study, I believe is what, and they're paying half, am I correct?
Right.
And then we have the other half and that's why we're, that's why we're asking for the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar authorization tonight.
I'm sorry, I have a pretzel in my mouth. How does it, when, when the, when the recommendation was made years ago to build the dam up north, was a study done at that time or is this another study?
No, it, at that time, I mean, this, it goes way back and we had a feasibility study done. There was a, um, general reports were done, completed by the Corps. Then we had the flood of nineteen ninety-seven, kind of outdated. We had new information, had to be updated. And so, it's the updating process that needs to be completed, right?
Yes. Brad Johnson, I'm chairman of the South Dakota Board of Water Natural Resources. I'm also on the, the Lake Compesca Water District. And, and to sum up a little bit of what Sarah's saying is that the city of Watertown needs to come up with about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars total. So, the state, uh, our, our board recommended to the legislature for fifty percent of that, which is the two hundred and twenty-five thousand, and was approved by the legislature. So, that money is there. The mayor needs to ask the board to put that under, on a grant agreement. So, that's what you're talking about tonight. And then beyond that, um, you need to come up with another two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to compete, complete the local funding package. As I said, I'm on the Lake Compesca Water District Board and, and we had indicated earlier to the mayor that, uh, the Lake Compesca Board would participate in that funding. Um, we have not had a specific request, um, from the city for a dollar amount.
It is coming.
Yep. That'll be coming.
Just saying, okay.
But, but back to our other point, nineteen ninety-seven event and then in two thousand and one, we had another flood event. Neither of those flood events were included in the first study that was done. So, the hydrology changed, a lot of new information to add. This study brings that to completion. So, the, the, the study should be at a point where they recommend that the dam either be built or not. And then from that point, the city has to make a decision about whether it's going to proceed forward from there.
If it's not suggested to be built, do they make a suggestion of what should be done?
Well, I mean, there are, there are alternatives and one of the alternatives is nothing.
The day, if the big, you know, we've always heard the big dam, little dam thing, right?
Right.
So, I mean, is it possible if they come out and go, today feasibility-wise, for whatever the reason, it's not our suggestion to make the big dam, right?
Right.
Would they have a recommendation of what we do?
They will have a recommendation at the end of this and it will say, this is the preferred alternative. This is the only alternative that the federal government will participate in.
Shelley, how much should we budget for this for, for twenty sixteen?
I don't think we did.
Didn't we?
No. We weren't sure if it was going to, uh, go through the legislature or not, Glenn. So, this is something that we'll have to be working on.
So, we haven't budgeted for any expenditure, possible expenditures then, is what you're saying?
We're getting closer, but we still, I mean, until the, the federal government authorizes the Corps to move forward, there aren't going to be any costs for us to, to participate in, to complete the study. So, we, we have that hanging over us.
So, what we're talking about though is accepting that grant and then that, that money just set there someplace in limbo until.
We've accepted the grant. We applied for the grant. We, we've, the grant has been approved. Now, we're asking for a contract to be made, which spells out how the money changes hands and the finance department.
The mayor will have to sign a document and I'll have to sign the document on behalf of the state water board. Most of the money that the Corps is going to ask for is not going to be due until twenty sixteen, or twenty seventeen. Their fiscal year is just kicking in, so they've just got the authorization for their four hundred and fifty thousand part of it, you know, to, to, to go. And, and they had indicated earlier that the money from, from local sponsors would be due down the road. So, um, I don't think you're in any position of needing to make an emergency.
This is, this is something that we need to get accomplished from, from our first, our first, uh, approval from the council to even do the study. And this is, this is just part of the process. So, that's what we'll be asking tonight is get this done.
And authorize the mayor and, and the finance officer to sign all of the related documents.
It is.
So, Sarah, so I understand this correctly, we have to wait for the federal government to okay the process to move forward. Once we get the money, then we got to wait for them. Do we have any idea how long that might take?
Well, we were hoping that it would be underway right now. So, I mean.
And Brad, is this something that we'd want to discuss or we'd want to put some pressure on our, our congressional folks in the state to help move it along?
Well, Sarah, Sarah may know something I don't, but the, the last I heard that they had, the Corps was budgeting the money. And so, they just had to get it into the right fiscal year to, to, to access that money. And then we had the time to put the rest of the package together and then they'll, they'll move forward on it. And I think, I think it's all proceeding as the Corps.
Does that lock in? Because this is extended over a number of years, this whole process. If they've assigned so much money and we have our portion of it and there's some agreement, does that lock in a deal? Or is it, when they come around to do it, say, well, so much time has passed now and it's going to cost more money and now we got to start the whole process over again?
That's a possibility, but, I mean, we're not counting on that.
It was, it was represented that this roughly nine hundred thousand dollars would complete the study and bring it to an end. At that point, they will issue, they'll go through their public meetings and everything, but then they will issue their final report. And then at that point, it moves to a construction phase or it doesn't. And so, at that point, then, then you start talking about the, the big dollars and that's a whole different discussion than finishing the study.
Well, we had that discussion though, a number of years ago and they were supposed to do the, the study. Then we had the flood that, most of that was on the Missouri or whatever and they got taken someplace else. And this whole thing just got, start all over thing pretty much, or you're saying it's just an update, is what you're saying?
And a lot of the work is done. It's, it isn't starting over. It's completing it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we had mentioned at one point some time ago that we were about halfway through it. Is that right?
I think they're more than halfway.
And we're really trying to get.
Yeah, I think they're more than halfway through. The, the Corps has made the determined, this study is different, this project's different than most of them that they have. This was originally congressionally directed back when it first started. And so, they have very few studies or projects left on their docket that was directed by a Congress, by Congress. They want to get it done and get all of those congressionally directed projects off of their list. And then they're, so they're going to get it done and they're either going to build it or they're not. And then it's done and gone, I mean, one way or another.
Brad, I got a question and then, then I, that would be my last question. If this thing drags on, the, the money that we are being granted by the state, does that, is that assured us throughout that duration of time? It, it, let's say it took five years for Congress to authorize them. Is the South Dakota legislature going to still be committed to those same dollars five years from now? Do they just stay there in our little bank to use until this project is either?
I don't, I don't think I could speak for the legislature, but, um, the, you've got a, you've got a number of years. And I would anticipate the way, from everything the Corps has indicated, that they're going to move quickly. They're just, they want to get this done. And if, if, if for some reason we have many communities that have delays in projects or whatever and they come to us and then we extend, we extend the grant or we go through the process to get it redone. And, and usually when a recommendation from the water board goes to the state for legislature, there's very little opposition to anything that comes. So, I don't anticipate there's a problem.
And, and to your point, yes, it was one of those congressional ones that they want to get off the shelf and dust it off and get it done. Any other quick questions? Thank you both. Appreciate it. Okay, Shane, we're going to slide to, um, number four.
All right, number four, um, if you've read your memo, we recently, on February twenty-third, received bids on the Fifteenth Street Northeast project, that is, the segment of road that would get built, from Fourteenth Avenue up to the new rec center. So, basically, can you put my, okay, so, from Fourteenth Avenue up to the entrance of the new rec center is a road project that we just recently took bids on. And the reason I thought it was worthy of a work session discussion is because we had an irregularity in one of the bid items that changed the, uh, unit price by a factor of one hundred. It's a bid item for silt fence, which is normally in that five dollars a linear foot and under range. And for some reason, the decimal point was written incorrectly so that it read four hundred and twenty dollars a linear foot. We did, uh, our research at the staff level, made sure that the contractor was aware of the error. We did our research at the staff level, made sure that the contractor was aware of the error and had a discussion on that. His bid amount was correct, just that one unit price was off. So what we did is, we're recommending award based on the correct addition total of all the column, you know, the columns of the bid items. And then you're gonna see a change order follow if you award that project tonight. You're gonna see a another action asking for a change order, then that changes that unit price from four hundred and twenty dollars down to the four dollars and twenty cents. There will be no change in the overall contract price or anything of that nature. Now, we did review this irregularity with former city council, Fox, on it, and we're following his recommendations. So the process is gonna be that we'll ask you to award the the project if you so choose. And then if you do choose to award, we would subsequently ask you to approve a change order, so.
The reason for the list of the unit prices, in case there's an addition or deduction at the, at the, during the course of the contract, for the amount of footage could change, is that the reason why that's dynamized in there?
Yes.
Otherwise, it wouldn't make any difference if it's a bid and they're doing it. That's the only reason to have it separated out, is so you can?
Well, we take unit prices on what we believe are gonna be planned quantities that we'll use. And of course, what happened in this case was, somebody probably was reading to someone else, and they said four twenty. Now, you could write that as four hundred and twenty dollars, which was what happened, or it could be four dollars and twenty cents, which was what the intent was. So we made sure that we clarified what the intent was, and the intent is four dollars and twenty cents, which is consistent with the cost of that bid item over hundreds of projects.
The only effect that would have in a contract is, at some point in time, the footage that was bid initially would change to more or less.
No, it would, I mean, you have to use the unit, correct unit price to go forward with payouts.
Basically, they're gonna charge, part of that, charging that per foot, based on whatever footage they have to put in.
Correct, yeah, so we're trying to fix the irregularity.
The change order really isn't a dollar amount, and it's just a, the unit price is on, so.
Correct. So I hope, I just wanted you to understand why, why you're getting both of those type of documents at the initial stage of a project. Normally, you wouldn't see a change order for, you know, at least a month or two into the project, so. Anyway, that's that explanation. Any other questions?
When is that scheduled to be done?
Well, if you, based on award tonight, we probably could start that project in as soon as May or whenever the weather allows us to get started, so.
Thanks, Shane. If you, if you want, maybe you can jump right over to number six and give us a, an idea on this new, this new detour route that we're discussing.
It's a little hard to see on the scale here, I'll zoom in as we, as we need to. But the South Dakota DOT is reconstructing Highway eighty-one from down here on Third Avenue, where the stoplight is, all the way north to Eighteenth Avenue. And in the course of their work, there's a substantial amount of utility work that needs to be done between Third Avenue and Tenth Avenue. So what their idea or their scope was, is that they were gonna shut down that portion of the highway and initiate a detour onto city streets. They came to the city with a plan for a detour, and I reviewed it with the police department, street department, and fire department to make sure that we were all comfortable or not with their proposed detour. In the end, we weren't comfortable that, with the route that they chose because of the width of the streets. It was a very residential area. I didn't really want to introduce semi-trucks potentially into that portion of the neighborhood. So we chose an alternate route, which, when you're coming from, from the south on Highway eighty-one, you would turn onto Third Avenue, take that over to Eleventh Street by the school. Again, there's a stoplight there. Then we would turn that traffic north up to Tenth Avenue, which we've now converted into a four-way stop. And then that detour would proceed back to Highway eighty-one. All other sections of Highway eighty-one, they plan to do under traffic, so they'll do it in halves or, you know, manage the traffic within their own construction zone. For this utility work we're digging, you know, it takes longer and and you have to remove more pavement to get the utilities in, in the direct correct location. So anyway, the, we did discuss this detour route with the school. They do have concerns of the interaction of traffic, and this project is scheduled to start in April. So we will have the month of April and May to contend with the detour route in and around the school. However, my discussion with Leslie Judding acknowledged their concerns and our concerns are as well for safety. But we still feel that this is a better route, because the trucks can make the turns without conflicts. And and if everybody obeys the laws, as we all should on the road, that we aren't really in adding any dangerous elements to this, other than just a little bit more traffic. She did have concerns about the fall schedule, that because the new intermediate school will be kicking off this fall, it'll be more than six hundred students back in that building. And the contractor's schedule indicates that we should be done several weeks before school starts in the fall, and then we wouldn't have that co, new conflict in existence. So, so essentially, we're gonna have a two-month interaction with school traffic and the detour traffic. And then the rest of the summer is just gonna be normal city traffic interacting with the detour traffic, so.
Shane, you have a question. When the middle of school was still operating, there was a lot of foot traffic between the middle school and the high school. A lot of kids, I used to, and I live up there, so I see it all the time. With that now being an intermediate school, is that foot traffic gonna be a lot less?
A lot less. I doubt it, because most of those students still can't drive, but, you know, they're gonna be in that, what, seventh, eighth grade range, probably? Fifth, sixth, you know, and still in the middle school age, what, you know, I mean, we consider everything from fifth to ninth, or eighth, middle school-ish.
Fifth and sixth grade, and they're still going to do the bus exchange there.
Yeah.
And those are the age kids that, for first grade through sixth grade, they're the ones that go over to the Boys and Girls Club. That'll probably get more student traffic than less, just because.
Yep, and what we're gonna, what we'll have to do is, and I'm sure the schools got a plan to do an education piece for those kids, you know, trying to train them to cross at the light, where you have the push-button cross and protect yourself, you know. And as I understand it, they do have a crossing guard that monitors that area somewhat too during the peak times of the school interactions, so.
We always used to have a bus, we had a bus, but the kids walked. You know, we offered a bus, and then they still walked over, so I, I don't know if it's gonna be simple to say, they'll just.
Was it Bryce that worked with you on this?
Yeah.
Could you, could you show where maybe Bryce had, had looked at originally?
Okay, yeah, the the DOT's proposed route took us west on Third Avenue, over to Maple Street, then north to Tenth, and ba, back over to Highway eighty-one. And what happens is, the first couple blocks here of of Maple are plenty wide, but you get north of Fifth, Fifth Avenue to to Tenth Avenue, that street narrows down to about thirty feet wide. And then you have boulevard trees that hang over, over the street. And then you're gonna have people putting their garbage cans out there on collection day. So there's just too many intangibles there. You don't know how the trucks are gonna navigate through the narrow street. We would have to restrict parking, and we are gonna have to restrict parking on Third Avenue and Tenth Avenue on this project. Eleventh Avenue, or Eleventh Street is already restricted. But, you know, there are so many different things that we would have to change to make that a viable route, that I just wasn't comfortable doing it. And that was the end result of our discussion with PD and the fire station, that we didn't want to send semi-truck-sized vehicles down such a narrow residential street and expect no problems, so.
And I would like to say that you did have that opportunity to work with the fire and police on this and came up with the plan that that actually works a little better.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Shane on this?
This is gonna be this summer, then, right?
Correct, the project's.
So the middle school issue is after the fact, then, as far as the, not middle school, but the intermediate school. Is Tenth Avenue then gonna have a, a light, that intersection?
If, if memory correct, serves me correctly, there is a light there, yeah.
Okay, the only other thing I can think of is this, this spring would be a lot of people going back and forth with track. Obviously, that's gonna be, that time of the day is gonna be.
On the new road, there will be a, there will be a new light on Tenth Avenue. And we did have this conversation with the DOT just the other day, John and I, and and I seen Jim was here. We had that conversation with them, made sure that they are putting Tenth Avenue in. Fourteenth Avenue, they're putting that one in, and they're looking at the five signals so that you get the arrows that go for the cars to come across. They are putting a, which kind of surprised me, they're putting, I, I'm not, not sure exactly how to say it. It's like a crosswalk, where the kids can give it a push, and the yellow lights come on, flashing, so people are aware of them crossing. I'm a bit surprised where it's at. We asked them to, to take another look at that. It'll be crossing right there at Plains Lutheran Church, going from the west to east, or east to west, whichever way you're coming. They can cross there. I, I still think that we should ask them to go up again to Eighteenth Avenue and put one up there.
Yep, that's a good idea.
I don't know how that ever happened to get put into that spot. I think it's, I don't think it's that necessary, I really don't. I'd like to see one on Eighteenth and one on Highway twenty.
I guess, unless I'm naive, I don't see where the foot traffic would be at that spot. And we know they had some issues up there closer to Eighteenth, because they have to come way down to Sixteenth and then back.
Yeah, and we had that discussion with Joel the other day. So they're look, just so you know, they are looking at that particular light, they're looking at a light on Eighteenth Avenue, a crosswalk light, and they're also looking at over by McKinley Court in that area to put a, a light to cross on Highway twenty, so that, that, that's a good thing.
I would just add to that, that both Mike and I have gotten calls from Warday residents about Eighteenth, because the kids across north from Northridge to Jefferson School.
And the, and the, Joel John, at the DOT, was very open to that and to, now's the time to make these changes if we're going to do something.
Yeah, what you're identifying is, there is a lack of sidewalk, and we'll have sidewalk along here, but they, the students don't typically cross all the way down here and walk up here. They, they want to cut across the new developments and get, come straight across, you know, and that.
Right, so I think if they're open to putting one down by, by the Great Plains, I think they should look at this one, and that would be the prudent thing to do.
I agree.
Shane, this project's actually being done in in two phases, isn't it? I mean, I.
No, this, this is just a one-phase, this is a summer thing. You're thinking Highway two twelve will be done in two phases.
No, I, I, I know that, but in, in our full council agenda packet, there's a short detour from Second Avenue over a block.
Right, and that's a one-block thing, that's a very short-lived, like, two-week-long detour. For two weeks, I can live with headaches. I don't want to live all summer with headaches going down through the other direction, so.
You know, if you wanted to, Don, maybe you could just mention a little bit, we had some discussion also. If you could go down South Highway eighty-one and Twentieth Avenue. This was a discussion that we had last week with, with Joel John, also on, on the corner on Twentieth Avenue. And my discussion and John's and Jim's, Jim, if you want to come up, I seen you back there. I thought maybe you, you could visit with us a little bit about also what I heard when we talked to Department of Transportation Joel John. And we were talking about that corner getting the speed limit reduced. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, they didn't seem too thrilled about it at the time. Is that kind of what you heard?
Well, they, they, they wanted to study the traffic speeds a little bit more thoroughly. And I think our, our position was, in two years, you're gonna put a roundabout in there. You already know you have a problem, and maybe not those exact words, but what more is there to look at?
I wanted you to, I wanted you to kind of hear, because then Don was in my office, and we had, and Mike, and we had this conversation, and we asked Don to call, you know, because he's a commissioner on the Department of Transportation. Maybe give us a little update on, on your conversation with Joel.
Yeah, that is true, they do want to do a little more of a study to get an updated handle on the traffic counts, but, you know, they're very data-driven, so that's not surprising. But I do believe that they're very much understanding that that's gonna be increased traffic over on the bypass on Highway eighty-one. They recognize that that's gonna be increased traffic on a not-so-safe intersection, and that they will be glad to work with us on that.
Don, which comes first, the roundabout or the working on two twelve?
Roundabout will be in first, two twelve, that's gonna be eighteen, and then you've got two twelve will be in two segments, nineteen, and then twenty-one.
Okay, so at least there'll be, it'll be there by the time we get the two twelve captured. That thing is gonna really change the traffic flow.
Right, and then we also, you know, in Watertown days, we were out there, and it was very well-attended. But next year, if you attend the Watertown Days, we are going to have a presentation by the, the State Department of Transportation on how they expect two twelve to look and and the process. And I think that'll be very important for us. So I believe that's all the discussion that we need on the detour route, are we good with that?
Yep, I'll just bring that for council action, to authorize you to enter the agreement at the regular session.
Well, then I think what I will do is, I will adjourn this meeting. We will be back here at seven o'clock for the city council.
Okay, well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, March seventh, two thousand and sixteen, city council meeting, and at this time, I will call the meeting to aura, to order. And I'll ask Pastor Sarah Nelson from the First United Methodist Church to lead us in prayer.
Let us pray, God of all creation, we come before you today to give you honor and to give you praise. You are the source of all that is good. We ask for your presence with us here tonight. As our city leaders and the community make important decisions, we pray that you would guide and direct the meeting, so that your wisdom, your productivity, and your respect for humanity would prevail. We thank you for your guidance in helping us accomplish our work tonight and our goals this day. We pray all of this in the name of Jesus our Christ, amen.
Okay, well, Shelley, if you'll do a roll call for us.
Albertson.
Here.
Bueller.
Here.
Danforth.
Here.
Manti, absent. Reifenberger.
Here.
Roby.
Here.
Solom.
Here.
Thorson.
Here.
Tupper.
Here.
Vilhauer.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we, before they take off, I'm sorry for interrupting, but I'd like to, they're hiding behind the screen. Pastor Sarah's, her two daughters, Mara and Austin, hiding back there, so I'd like to welcome them tonight, too.
I did see them, I had a chance to talk to them, and they're kind of shy. Come on around, Sarah, bring them out here. Perfect, all right. I said, I think I said something about, there's Sarah and little Sarah and littler Sarah, I think that's what I said. Thanks for doing that, Sarah. All right. At this time, I, I need to make a little change to the consent agenda. Number, or letter D, the mayor's appointment, we're gonna have Bill Reifenberger, Glenn Vilhauer, and Bruce Bueller on the, as representatives on this. Is that correct?
on the, as representatives on this. Is that correct, Bruce? Okay. All right. So if I can get a, a motion of second for approval of the consent agenda? Motion by, was it Bruce? John. And second by Glenn. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, number two, approval of the agenda. I do need to poll number nine. It will be out of here. That will be on the next, next council meeting. So that will be gone. So I will look for a motion of a second for approval of the agenda. Motion by John, second by Bill. Any questions? Any changes? Hearing none. I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Did you need to add that first reading, or were you not gonna do that?
Oh, I do. Can I amend this? I'm sorry. We got something here that I need to add. Gosh, this kinda went really fast. I do need to add it onto 22A, and get the right one here. Do we need to have a different motion with this included?
Can we just start over? Can you just go back?
It's a mulligan.
Yeah.
First one of the year.
Just, just a do-over.
It's a do-over.
Yeah.
That's my mulligan.
Just, can you just start over and remove the number nine and then add the agenda item?
Okay. Number two, approve the agenda. I will need to poll number nine off the agenda. I will also have to add on 22A, it will be the first reading of ordinance number 1604, amending the zoning district boundaries by rezoning Little's first addition from I-1 Light Industrial District to C-3 Highway Commercial District. That will be under 22A. So I will look for a motion of a second again. Motion by Dan, second by Bruce. Any questions? Hearing none. I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks for reminding me on that, Shelley. Okay, number three, Urban Renewal District, 2015 Annual Report of Finances and Activities. Who was, Randy, have you got something that you wanted to show on that?
Beth was gonna have that prepared. I guess there is a document here.
Yeah, there actually is the activities for 2015 in the agenda packet along with a condensed version of the financial statements that is required by state statute for the Urban Renewal District. So I guess if anybody has any specific questions on any of that or has any comments about anything?
I do have that here. I could run over it just a little bit if you'd like.
Go ahead.
On the, on the statement of revenue expenditures and charges and, or changes in fund balance, I have here in the year 2015, the, this is revenues, rentals in buildings, $2,400. Interest earned on their investments was $654.43. Donations from external organizations of $1,200. Interest collected on their loans of $1,583.47, for a total revenue of $5,837.90. We go to their expenditures. Expenditures were personal services of $505.02. The insurance premiums were $112.31. It goes on supplies of $6,033.70, repairs of $2565.61, utilities of $48.25, capital outlay of $21,323.71. Flower project uptown was $14,456.33. Write-off on uncollectible loans of $6,100.77. Total expenditures of $55,922.45. Excess deficiency of revenues over expenditures of $50,084.55. Fund balance beginning of the year, $241,568.90. Fund balance of $191,484.35. Any questions on that?
Maybe just so people understand why there's a deficit there is 'cause we took away the taxes. We didn't have that revenue coming in.
Bill, would that explain to the, or if you would know that the uncollectible loans were just cleaning up some, some old uncollectible balances out there?
That wouldn't be what that was, yes.
Okay.
Actually, everything's going pretty well in their renewal board yet, you know, they got the new signage up there. Looks good. You got some new businesses coming out of town.
But then the next, oh, I would say sixty-eight weeks, we should have the report back to the council on the charrette. I do believe our next, next month, we'll have our renewal board meeting and go over that and get it ready for a presentation to the city council mayor.
Any other questions on it? Okay. We will, we will move forward. Number four, presentation of the preliminary 2015 city financial report. Shelley, if you can handle that for us.
I can. You have that in your agenda packet. This is what we give for the first meeting in March. It's a very abbreviated version of the financial statements. You will get the complete financial report in about June, once the audit is completed. So these are preliminary numbers. They are subject to change based on that audit, so keep that in mind. The first page outlines the governmental funds, which are separated by major funds, and then all of the other non-major funds are put into that other governmental funds category. This year, we have three major funds, the general fund, capital improvement fund, and the capital projects fund. Basically, what makes up a governmental fund is they have some user fees, but they're heavily dependent on taxes, which would be property taxes and sales taxes. It goes, on the report, it shows the revenues, goes through the expenditures by function, not necessarily by fund. And then you kinda have the increase, decrease in the fund balance based on those revenues and expenditures, and then how that fund balance, what's assigned, what's not assigned, what's available, that type of thing. And that's the, what, what we've had in the past. The very last number is the long-term debt, the $42 million. That reflects the $30 million that we've bonded for those projects, so that's the total that's being paid out of the second penny, sales tax. Any debt that's being cared by enterprise funds will be on the second page. Just real quick, I know we have a long agenda, but as you can see, the general fund saw an increase in their fund balance of about $900,000. Part of that was due to sales taxes coming above what was budgeted. Also, we had some charges for services that came in higher and some unanticipated grants. The expenditures also came under budget, and we spent very little of the $300,000 contingency that we budgeted for. So that together caused that, that excess in reserves for 2015. Those can be used in future years, which as you remember in 2006, when we adopted the 2016 budget, we anticipated using about $400,000 in reserves to balance that budget. So that will help out, offset some of that if we end up using that. For the capital improvement, sales tax fund, that also saw a $1.6 million increase in fund balance. This is, um, this is a fund that has a lot of large, one-time expenditures, and a lot of them don't get done in the year or they don't get started. So it'll fluctuate from year to year. We did have some projects that came under budget, and there will be, at least from what I can quickly calculate, about $1.4 million carried over to complete some projects. Also, in the revenues, you'll see that there is a transfer to gov, to cover the debt covenant from those bond proceeds. That's reflected in there. And it went into restricted cash. Also, sales tax exceeded budget, and there was a land sale put in there that wasn't anticipated. The capital projects fund is new this year, and of course, as you guys know, that reflects the bond proceeds and any costs affiliated with the community center, the ball fields, and the two sheets of ice complex that will be constructed in the future. That will go away once those capital projects are complete and the money has been spent and accounted for. And then the proceeds of those, of that debt is being paid for out of the second penny. So you won't see any of that in that capital projects fund. The other governmental funds, and I said there are other smaller funds, which is like the park and rec, rec center, 911 library funds, that type of thing. And they're all put into one. It, it is a bit skewed 'cause we put our TIF funds in there, and they carry a negative balance. So that's why you see the beginning balance is negative, the ending balance is negative. That's basically an interloan fund in between ourselves, basically. So it is a little bit misleading on that, but you will get a complete picture on the final version of the annual report. On the second page, it shows the proprietary funds. Another word for that is enterprise funds. Basically, an enterprise fund is categorized as charging user fees to cover any operating and capital costs associated with operating that function. This is also split in between major funds and non-major funds. We actually only have one non-major fund, which is the solid waste fund. So when you see other proprietary funds, that's basically the solid waste fund. The other part of, of this page is at the bottom, you'll see depository and amount. Basically, that is the final ending cash balance that the city had at the end of 2015, and it shows what banks hold any of those cash in investments. Some of it is cash, some of it is CD investments. A big increase in that amount is that $30 million of bond proceeds that, that we had that will go away once those, and it'll go back down to a more normal level than we've seen in pre, past years. I can talk about the sewer fund, airport, and solid waste, and then I will have, Adam Karst is here somewhere in the crowd. He is my counterpart at Utilities, and he can kinda briefly go through the electric, water, and gas, which is run by the municipal utilities department. But the sewer fund, they saw about a $2 million increase in revenues from the previous year, and they kinda had a minimal increase in expenses, which accounted for about a $2 million increase in their total net assets. So they're very, very strong and doing well and growing. The airport fund continues to have a negative cash balance, and that's covered by the general fund. They basically, what we call borrow, the airport, that, that X, that deficiency that they're down. We continue to monitor that. The revenues have gone up substantially from the previous year from having some additional land leases. There was a new eight-unit hangar that was constructed. There's another one that's gonna be built in 16, so that's all gonna help to take care of that negative cash balance in the future. The solid waste fund has been very stable. There really wasn't much of a change, very slight increase in, in the fund balance, and we like to see that. The small increase does reflect the increase in tipping fees and, and the $1 increase in residential fees that we did raise in April. So that, that is reflected a little bit in these numbers. And so I will hand it over to Adam, and he can talk about the electric, water, and gas. And then if you guys have any questions, I know that was fast, but just trying to give you a little summary, we can answer those questions at that point.
Thank you, Shelley. My name is Adam Karst, Director of Administration for Watertown Utilities. I'm in charge of the finances, like Shelley said, and I'm gonna just cover two statements, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions. So the first statement that we have, this is just a, an income statement for most of us in the business world. This is a combined statement of revenues and expenses. As you can see, we ended up the year with a $42.6 million for revenues, and that's comprised of $27.7 million of electric sales, $5 million of water, and about $10 million of gas. So that's lower than last year, and really, the reason is due to the warmer weather. So warmer weather, less sales. But one item I wanted to note, about 75% of our costs are attributed to purchased electricity and purchased gas and similar to that. So the majority of your utility bill, the sales, are gonna be paid for with purchases to outside parties. On the other side of the purchases, we have the cost to run the plant. This is the production expenses, is to produce the water and treat the water that everybody drinks, and then the transmission and distribution and the commercial general. This is, the majority of this cost is the labor for our folks, the linemen, the gas crews, the water crews, the office crews, and also the other costs to run our business. So we get operating costs of about $37.1 million to get a net income of $5.5 million. Then we have a little bit of interest income off of cash in the bank. Interest expense, we have about $18 million out in loans, so that's the interest cost on that other income we have. We have some hydrant fees and some tapping fees, so we get some additional revenue there. So we have an income before we transfer to the City of Watertown of about $5.7 million. And then we transfer to the City of Watertown's general fund $1.2 million to get an income. After transfer of City of Watertown, about $4.5. And that's, we kinda shoot for that number. It's about a 10% of the total gross, and it's a lot less than other, the other utilities in this, in the region and in the state, but that's, therefore, we can keep our, maintain our low rates. Our goal is always to keep, to be in that bottom third, and we are, we continue to be in the bottom of the whole state, so that's our, that's our goal, and that's where we maintain, maintain low revenues and other processes. This is the balance sheet. This column here is 2014. This column here is 2015, and this is just a change. Cash increased $2 million, and a lot of this is, we, we were right around that $16 million, but due to some timing, we had some transformers that we put in the Uptown substation and the Pelican substation. That cost, it was over $1.1 million, but that was some final payments. So we had a timing issue for cash. Our total utility plan, and here in Watertown, we have about $123 million of plant in the City of Watertown. That increased $5 million. So the net income, what happens is that net income is put back into the City of Watertown as far as infrastructure. We had $2.5 million for electric. The major projects for electric is the airport industrial park replacement. We replaced some underground as well as some other underground for residentials in the multi-district area. This large increase is, again, due to that large Pelican substation, the transformers in the Pelican substation, and also the Uptown substation. So everybody has more reliability for electric. Some of the changes here, revenue collect in advance, we owe more money out because of the warmer, the warmer winter. And then our debt has decreased to the $16.1 million for long-term debt. That is for our water treatment plants. We're trying to pay that down. We paid some additional funds down, so that decreased $1.6 million. So as far as our equity increase, the $4.5 million, it's the $5.7 million net income less the $1.2 million transfer to the City of Watertown's general fund. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'd like to make a comment. Adam's being somewhat modest in this, and those who that read the public opinion last week saw that not only do we have some of the lowest, but by far the lowest utility rates of larger communities in the state. I was at that meeting last week when this was presented. I even questioned, are we comparing apples to apples as far as everybody pulling the same data? I was assured that, that we were, so I think it is to be commended, you know, the rates that we do have here in Watertown.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Shelley or Adam? Hearing none? Thank you, folks. Adam, I liked the color of that shirt tonight.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thanks again. Okay, we will move on. Number five, application for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license to Harry's Haircuts and Hot Towels, LLC doing business, Harry's Haircuts and Hot Towels, located at 16 West Kemp. At this time, I will open the public hearing if there's anyone that wants to speak in favor of or against this. This is your opportunity. Did you wanna talk on this, Steve?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Thanks, guys. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. I will look for a motion of a second for discussion. Motion by Randy, second by Mike. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number six, application for a new retail on-off sale wine license to BMG Incorporated doing business as Ringo's, located at 520 10th Street Northwest. At this time, I will open the public hearing if there's anyone that wants to speak in favor of or against this. Motion by Mike, second by John. Any questions?
Mayor, I'm trying to understand this, because isn't Ringo's operating now?
They are.
And is this?
This is for wine.
Oh, this is for wine only?
Yeah, this is to sell wine.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number seven, vacation of the South Broadway Street, Resolution Number 1610. At this time, I will open the public hearing. So if there's anybody who wants to speak in favor of or against this, I will say that I would, I would prefer that we hold our comments down to just a short while. Please, if someone has always, already said something, and you want to get up and say it, just, you know, so it isn't the same thing over and over and over, so, because we do have an extremely long agenda tonight, but I don't want to push it too hard. So the public hearing is open, so anybody who wants to come up, you're sure welcome. State your name and what you want to talk about.
Good evening. My name is Ben Kleingen. I'm an attorney from Brookings. I also, interestingly enough, teach business law at South Dakota State University. I practice with Rich Helsber and myself and several other attorneys in Brookings. And in addition to teaching business law at South Dakota State, tonight I represent a business. That business is Little River City, which is very, very interested, very concerned about this action item tonight. Obviously, it's here because this council's looking at vacating that. It's my understanding there's 1,100 cars that come up and down that road every day. That's a lot of cars. That surprised me a lot, having grown up in Brookings County and coming up to Connington County regularly. But that many cars coming up and down that road, it's interesting to see where they're going. That's a direct route into Watertown, but it's also the direct and pretty much exclusive route for all those people to come to my client's business. And I find it very interesting that Glacial Lakes LLC and other advocates in favor of vacating this road think that that's all vehicles that aren't coming into Watertown. That, folks, is just a recipe for litigation. That's an admission that all those folks are coming up to go to those businesses. That's their business. That is their entire business model, is to have these people come up and spend money at my client's outfit, and that's what they're there to do. Closing this road would devastate my client's business. It would devastate it. It's a recipe for litigation, and that's why I'm here. That's why I came today, that's why I marched right up here to point that out. This is an interesting way for the railroad to go about this and for Glacial Lakes to go about it. We're not opposed to ethanol. We love this ethanol plant. We think it's great. We're just opposed to the way that it's being done. I don't think it's appropriate for anyone to try to pacify the railroad in order to make this happen. There is a way to do this. There's a right way to do this, to keep this road open and to accomplish the efficiency goals of the ethanol plant, and it can be done, but we haven't seen the proposal yet. It will require a little bit different expense, but it will allow everyone to have what they, what they want out of this deal. So again, don't, don't consider this to be in opposition to that ethanol plant one bit. We're greatly in favor of that.
If I can, Ben, what would be the opportunity to do something different? What are you proposing?
I'm not proposing anything, because I haven't been on this, this deal very long. But it's my understanding that it is theoretically possible to build up some dirt and to go over and build the road up over the railroad tracks. Okay? And now, what I've heard is that, well, the railroad won't go for that. They don't like that. Well, you know, they don't like that, they don't like that. This isn't their community. They're not the ones that are putting a outfit out of business. Which, I mean, the interesting part of that is, if that outfit gets put out of business and it becomes litigation, it's the city's problem at that point. It's not, it's not the, it's not the ethanol problem, ethanol plant's problem anymore. It's not the railroad plant's problem anymore. Then it's a city problem, and it's the city's obligation to make it right. Which, I mean, from, from our perspective, and I think from a lot of people's perspective in here, as citizens, they'd rather have that handled up front. One way to handle it would be to look at some other, some other options. One would be that road over. The other question, I'm not a railroad guy, of course, but I can imagine that there's probably some other way to orient that track to make it work. I don't know the answer to that, and I haven't seen any other proposals, but what I've seen so far is this is the way the railroad likes it, and we need to pacify the railroad.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ben.
Well, thank you so much.
Ben, can I, I want to ask you a question.
Yep, go ahead.
I'm confused on the road over. You're suggesting, or you, it has been suggested to you that a feasible solution, other than what's being done today, proposed today, is to build an overpass that goes over all of that 2,500 feet of area? Is that what I'm hearing from you?
No, I don't think that's, I don't think that's feasible, but I think it's possible to just do dirt work and build it up twice, or once. It's going to depend on how those cars get pushed in there, and I can't believe that the railroad only does things one way. That doesn't make any sense to me. There has to be more than one way to do things, and I imagine that they definitely would not be in business if they were not willing to work with communities like Watertown.
Are you talking about 212 and the highway, or are you talking about the?
I think he's talking about the, if the railroad did a loop in there, I think he's expecting that you would have a road that would come up to it and over. Is that, you're not talking any kind of an overpass?
No, sir, just on Broadway there. And that's just dirt work, building it up.
It'd be two, two of them on Broadway, so.
At ground level, at track level?
Right.
That you drive over them? Like any other, is that what you're referring to?
Well, I think that's a possibility. If you build the dirt up, you can come right up over the tracks and keep that road open.
What do you mean, come up over the tracks? I drive over tracks every day. What do you mean?
You build it up, the road goes up and over, the tracks go under.
So you're talking an overpass?
Sure. Two overpasses.
You're talking two overpasses, listen.
And you said that there is a proposal coming?
I haven't heard that proposal yet, but I'd be happy to hear it.
So would me.
Well, you're the one, I don't want to be argumentative, you're confusing me, though.
Well, let me put it this way. I just spoke with Jim Sauer this evening, and that was something that he mentioned and said that it was just too expensive.
Okay. Thank you, Ben, appreciate it. Is anybody else who wants to speak on this subject? And Don, I don't know, is Don Rowland in here? Don, do they need, is there anybody upstairs that wants to come down?
There will be, yes.
Okay, they might as well come down, and then they can, they can stand.
Jim Sauer, Glacial Lakes Energy CEO. I did speak to the legal representative for Little River City, and again, I'm not a railroad engineer, or a traffic engineer, or any type of engineer for that matter. But the height of that overpass is going to be such that I doubt whether you can get that down in a safe manner to enter the intersection at 212 and Broadway. And on the other end, I doubt whether you can get it down in any safe manner to enter the intersection of Broadway and 20th Avenue. But let's let an engineer figure that out for us. I will tell you this, this project is approaching $20 million already in cost. If we push that any further higher than that level, then we start to back away and look at, you know, what's our return on investment on this project? You know, is it easier at that point to go out and start looking? You know, if you're going to invest significant dollars more beyond that, then we need to really look at, assess the whole project itself and also potentially even the competitiveness of the Watertown plant.
Right. Okay, and I don't, I don't know if I want to go there right now. One of the questions I had for you, Shane, you know, we were looking at an overpass on Highway 212 over the bridge. It seems to me it was a quarter mile or better from the top of the bridge to the, to the bottom with that grade.
Each way?
Each way.
Yeah, it, it takes about 20 feet of clearance to allow a train, railcar to go underneath the bridge at minimum, probably maybe even closer to 25 feet. So you have to look at the total road grade separations, probably in that neighborhood of, you know, 25 plus four or five feet for the actual bridge structure. So it is a significant grade change. It's not something that's easily done, and if you, given the current proposed track configuration, I believe that Jim is right, that it would be very challenging for us to have an overpass on either end and successfully land those in, in time to maneuver through the two intersections. So the only alternative would be is if the track configuration could somehow be managed as well in there. And one thing that I don't know, you know, my civil background doesn't give me all of the parameters on how tight a radius is those train cars can maneuver in there, and I'm suspecting that they're probably pushing those limits already with, given the, the current configuration that's proposed. Otherwise, they wouldn't have built that with as big a circle as they're proposing. So that's, again, that's just gut instinct, and grade separation would be difficult at this.
Jim, I seen Courtney Livingston back here, wanted to say a couple of words. I'm going to just break in on you and let, let Courtney come on up and have a few words.
Thank you, members of the council. I am Courtney Livingston, and we do live in Air Haven on the south side of Lake Pelican. We've traveled this South Broadway Road, Foley Road, Larabee Road, or some of the various names to use to identify this piece of blacktop for many years, just like a lot of others have done. Our fire department ambulance teams have used it also. They found our place three times. I give the EMTs a big credit for saving my life on Labor Day of 2010. When we need the services of these folks, time is important. The records of the department most likely show response times for their management of fast service. When those of us that live in this area of Watertown and Connington County need EMTs and fire trucks, we need them as quickly as possible. The shortest distance between two points, as we all know, is a straight line, not one that goes in arc or circle or takes a longer route in distance. The shortest line from the fire hall to the junction of South Broadway and 20th Avenue is utilizing the South Broadway route. The longest route is via Highway 20, and using 81 is in between the two routes. Are the lives and property that would be served by means of the South Broadway route important? Yes. Is the ethanol plant important? Yes. Isn't it important to have those people that use South Broadway get to the uptown area also important? These are people that come to Watertown via the Foley Road and want to do business in the center part of the community. Sure, these folks may use other roads, but it certainly isn't as convenient as using South Broadway. They certainly could skip coming to the uptown area and go elsewhere for their product and services. In what I've listened to and read, it appears that the lives and property that are served by South Broadway are not in consideration in this process. You might say, we're being thrown under the train. Think about this. If this project is so important to Glacial Lakes Energy, why do they need to resort to threatening the city with relocating their administrative headquarters to another city or out of state? They say if they can't have it their way, they could sell the Watertown plant and buy another plant someplace else. They plant the question that if they sell the plant, will the new operator be as supportive to the, to the community as they say they are in their contributions to the city and the various organizations that get donations from Glacial Lakes? To the reader of the letter to the editor, this sure sounds like a threat. I sure hope that none of you council members have been offered a bribe to get your vote for this closing. I have to believe that with some responsible planning, both the Glacial Lakes corn processors and the citizens could be adequately served. In the questions that I have asked of the city employees, some of the items I mentioned previously have not been investigated or maybe thought about. I would ask that the Watertown City Council do additional research on this decision to close South Broadway and see if a better approach could be developed to take care of all of us before invoking on this important issue through the citizens of this area and Glacial Lakes Energy. Do lives of people and property matter? I sure hope it does. I would certainly thank Glacial Lake Energy and their support of community growth and the local organizations they are supporting. And yes, I do, and I have used ethanol products in all of my engines since it's been available. By the way, I'm not threatening to move elsewhere or take my business someplace else if you, as a city council, decide to close South Broadway. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address my concerns on this South Broadway closure.
Thank you, Courtney. I respect most of your conversation. I do take offense that you would even say such a thing as a bribe. I, I respect you better than that. I didn't like that, but that's just me, just my personal opinion. I will, I will also take exception. Doug, come on up. We have looked at the lives that are down there, Courtney, over and over and over. I will ask Chief Krantz to come up and give us a little discussion on, on the traffic that you get, you know, when you guys are out on a call, so if you can give us a little update on what goes on.
Sure. So instead of going down Broadway, and if we would take a response from Station 1 down to 81, over to 20th Avenue, we used Dakota Bodies as a, as just a reference point, and that added .6 miles to our response time. So it does increase our response mileage a little bit, by .6 miles, but what we did, what we did find is, there's, there's two ways of getting to an emergency. It's the shortest route and the safest route. So we kind of look at all the things that we would run into. What we did find that by taking South Broadway, we do run across a railroad track right towards the end of, of South Broadway. Over on Highway 20 on 20th Avenue, we also hit a railroad track. So the only way we can, we can get down to 20th Avenue without crossing a railroad track is actually 81. So this does give us something to think about. If we, if we're going down in an emergency and the trains are across the railroad track on, on a small two-lane, that does present us with some difficult decisions. We're not going to be able to back up, we're going to have to wait until that train passes. So what we're looking at is, should we be going down Highway 81 all the time over to 20th Avenue, adding that .6 miles onto there, but assuring that we're going to take a four-lane highway and actually getting to the emergency to, to, for all of our responses out of Station 1? Station 2 would also take the, the other way. They would take 212 and 20. So that's what we did find, no matter what, what is decided, we need to really take a serious look at, should we be going down, down Broadway with the railroad tracks, or should we be going over to, to Highway 81 and knowing that we can get through without a train? So.
And that's as it is today, correct?
Yes.
Doug, would you address response time on that?
Do we have a response time? .6 miles, we don't, we don't have a good actual response time. I would, I would guesstimate you're, you're looking at anywhere from 30 seconds to a minute and a half, two minutes, on average, depending on, on the situation, time of day, traffic. We, we have had a couple of responses out there as of late where we have taken both, both routes from Station 1, and it was about 45 seconds behind by the rig going down Broadway. Or, I'm sorry, the rig going down 81 versus the rig going down Broadway, so.
If you're in that area with, on the way to the hospital, which route would you take?
If we were on that way to the hospital, coming back, yeah, that, that way, it would depend on the call. If it's, if it's something real serious, we're afraid of the train, we'd probably just take 81, but otherwise, curving back over into Highway 20 would be our normal route. The, the train track is not too far from, from there, so we, we should be able to see if the trains are in the area, and if they would, we'd just go over to, to Highway 81.
Wouldn't 8110 be a straighter path to the hospital?
It would also be a good route, yes. And I believe, I didn't figure the mileage, but it'd be And I believe, I didn't figure the mileage, but it'd be pretty similar either direction.
Faster traffic also.
Probably faster and safer traffic.
Yeah, we like to stick to the main arterial roads as we're leaving town on emergencies and also coming back as far as we can. So the big four lanes and things like that, we like to get into the areas before we drop onto secondary roads and things like that.
And you don't have to worry about stoplights with the emergency vehicles, correct? They change for them?
Well, we do have to worry about stoplights, but we are able to change.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, and we just ask for permission.
But stop signs you need to stop at?
Most of the time, especially with the big trucks, we're not doing too fast. We want to make sure we're under control. Our rigs need to get there safe and not get in accidents, otherwise we don't do anybody any good, so.
Thanks, Doug. Tim, are you still here? Maybe you can shed a little light on how you guys respond. I know you also respond every time that the ambulance goes out and every time a fire truck goes out. So what do you guys do? I guess we haven't discussed this at all.
I would concur with the chief that we have those same considerations. A four-lane is better for us for passing vehicles and things like that. It's a safer route.
Guys got any questions for Tim? Okay, the public hearing is still open. If there's anybody that wants to speak in favor of or against this?
I'm Mike Davis, and I've been up and down the street on Broadway talking to different business owners and stuff, trying to get a feel of what they think about closing this road. And of course, the last meeting we had, you guys had already read my letter to the editor, so you knew where I was coming from. And I wanted to bring up something that came to mind when I was talking to different individuals since then. And I hope that nobody has kind of promised Glacier Lakes that they would automatically get this road closed without, because Glacier Lakes has invested a lot of money in buying land and getting this ready to go. And I cannot see why we can't split the train on Broadway south and still get your unit trains together. No. I realize that the train right now works up and down to twelve at twelve o'clock and at five o'clock when we're really busy. I don't know if that's on purpose or what, but it's there every day. And to me, it seems like that they would at least be working down off of Highway two-twelve and stuff. I don't want to stop Glacier Lakes from expanding. I don't want to stop any business from expanding, but I don't want to put Napa, Little River City, and Max Hardware and those out of business either. And so I like to see the roads stay right where they are. And that was my comment. I just was worried that somebody had told them that this is no problem closing that road. And I think it should go to a vote of the people.
Okay, does anybody else want to speak in favor of or against this? Was there anybody upstairs, Don, that wanted to come down? You're good? Okay.
Hello, I'm Dave Johnson. I live on Air Haven Road, south of Pelican, and I support Glacier Lakes. I understand their importance, but I listened to the planning commission meeting and they did their job. They talked about the effect of traffic, the effect on businesses, but nobody talked about the effect on eleven hundred people who use that road every day. So I just think it's important to look at what, this is just shifting costs to the citizens that are using that road. And I think those costs have to be recognized and they should be compensated. I know you can't compensate eleven hundred people for not being able to use that road, but there's a cost each time you can't take that road, you know? It's an extra mile detour. It's a couple of minutes more time. In fact, if you added it all up, that's about a four-hundred-thousand-mile detour every year or about thirteen thousand eight hundred hours of lost time. And that's significant. Of course, Glacier Lakes has offered some benefits. I realize the change from thirty crossings a day to six crossings a day is going to be significant. It drops the time. Right now, it's roughly twelve thousand eight hundred hours wasted waiting at these crossings every year. But, you know, it just, that's sort of a wash, so I can't really count that it's a big benefit. Another benefit they talk about is taking off the maintenance costs that the city has for those two bridges. Well, that's sort of like promising me to save a lot of maintenance costs on my vehicle. They'll fix it up, but I won't be able to use it anymore, so I kind of brush that off too. The other thing, that's a good thing, not storing tanker cars downtown anymore. But it's just, it seems unfair to put this burden on eleven hundred citizens and not get anything back for it. So I think this is probably the wrong approach to vacate the right-of-way. I would suggest that we keep the right-of-way and lease it to them for an annual fee, you know? There's a number of reasons. I used to work on rail trail projects and I can tell you, it's really hard to establish a right-of-way. If you've got a right-of-way, you could keep it.
And we are keeping that right-of-way, just so you know.
As a transportation easement.
I believe it's a transportation and utility easement that will be kept, yes.
Well, that's very encouraging. I'm really pleased to know that. But the thing is, if you had, and I, well, I'll skip that part of my discussion since we'll be retaining the right-of-way. But I just think four-hundred-thousand miles a year in a detour deserves some compensation, so maybe a fair lease payment would be mileage raised for four-hundred-thousand dollars every year, you know? So, I mean, you can laugh, but.
No, I hear you. I'd kind of like to see that coming in, yeah. No, I get it.
Exactly.
Shane, could you just touch base on that? I know that the number eleven hundred has been used numerous times this evening. What are your latest numbers that you've had on there for accounts?
Well, we did a quick one-day study here recently, and that number was significantly lower than eleven hundred. I believe it was in the seven hundred, sub-seven hundred and fifty range. You know, one thing that we don't know is compared to the previous study of eleven hundred and some odd vehicles, you know, we don't know if that was a day-to-day thing or if it was, you know, what the anomalies are, but there is a difference. I mean, and that's been a trend that we've noticed ever since the bypass was constructed is that the traffic counts on Broadway have declined. And of course, it can vary greatly from day-to-day, hour-to-hour, I suppose, but, you know, our last account was below the eleven hundred number.
Shane, do you know what day of the week that was?
That was last Monday afternoon to Tuesday afternoon.
Is that both? Oh, I'm sorry.
I raise this question, I pointed at the last work session, when we hear those numbers, whatever they are, that would count. If a car goes one way, then comes back the other way, that's gonna be counted as two vehicles, right? When in fact, we've only got one, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So again, that number probably does not really truly reflect how many vehicles are actually using that road.
Yes. Without doing a detailed traffic study, those are the numbers that we get just by putting a counter out. We don't know, you know, and it does account for multiple axle vehicles like a truck. I mean, there's a way to kind of differentiate some of that, but as far as the vehicles and what direction they're headed, we didn't do that depth of study.
Well, I'd just like to say that, you know, I think that, you know, I see a twenty-million-dollar boulder rolling down the hill. I can see what's inevitably, what's inevitable here, but I just think equity is the issue, you know? And we're placing the burden, thirty thousand cars are interrupted intermittently by train crossing. Eleven hundred cars will be interrupted forever, so just compensation and equity is the issue.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Okay, I got just a touch more time. If there's anybody else wants to speak in favor of or against?
Mayor, we do have a representative from the BN with us, if you'd have some questions for him.
Sure.
Good evening. Daryl Faircloth from BNSF. I'm a marketing manager from the Agricultural Products Division.
One of the questions that's been going on all the time is that Glacier Lakes has normally said that we're looking at thirty trains a month, almost one a day, you know, and they take anywhere from fifteen to thirty minutes that go across that road. It's extremely long. And by going with the unit train, we've been told that that would go down to twelve trains a month and six of those would be during the day and the evening. Is that something that you would be aware of? Is that typical of a unit train system?
The service provided from our unit trains is vastly more efficient than manifest service or single-car service. It's hard to say statistically, you know, the spot times that the trains actually arrive. That's a little more random, I think.
One other question, you know, I think somebody just mentioned it tonight, where if you can split those cars, are you losing, are you losing something that you're trying to accomplish by splitting them in the, you know, forty-eight cars here and forty-eight cars there? You're all, all of a sudden, you're working on them again. Is that an issue that you see with BN?
Yes, sir. Those additional work events do not align with our unit train guidelines. A facility has to be able to receive as well as hand full and empty units to BNSF in one, excuse me, in one spot.
And are those guideline, you said it's a guideline or it's a requirement?
It's a requirement.
Okay. And those, they aren't deviated on by Burlington Northern at any point?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Any questions for this gentleman?
When they cross with a unit train, when they cross, you know, and maybe this is too early to tell, but when they cross like Highway two-twelve, what do you anticipate that taking, time-wise?
Without knowing the specifics of the service plan, I couldn't answer that question.
Jim, have you had that, did you not?
Assuming a train is about seven thousand feet long and it may just be a hair more than that, and if we assume ten miles per hour, which is what the local folks, the BN crews had told us that their speed would be, that calculated out to about eight and a half minutes to clear, for seven thousand feet of cars to clear a single point.
And there would be no reason to ever stop and go back? I mean, once you hook to the unit train, you're going and there's no back and forth like there is now?
No, that's the basic premise of having a loop track is to be able to access the facility in one continuous spot.
You know, I look at it a little bit. We take twenty-five percent of our community two, three times a day and cut them off from the rest of the community as the train's trying to go back and forth. The other day, I sat there fifteen minutes, finally went back the other direction. So, you know, you always gotta look at, no matter what decisions we make up here, they're not always gonna be good for everybody. We gotta look at the city as a whole. When I look at cutting off a fourth of our town at least two, three times a day, a lot of times for fifteen, twenty minutes at a time compared to cutting off possibly eleven hundred cars from coming up to, you know, there's a bigger, bigger risk of losing, losing part of Watertown to that than there is eleven hundred cars.
Jim, as long as you're up there, I got a question for you. One of your presentations, I'm not sure which one it was, you had made a reference to literally dozens of different permits that you need to get for this process. I don't remember what the number was, but where are you at in that whole process? I mean, let's say that we do vote, we do vote to close South Broadway and all of a sudden, something comes up that, you know, puts a whole kibosh of the whole project. I mean, are you confident that everything is working forward as far as the various permitting that you need?
We haven't encountered anything, Glenn, that would cause us to believe that there would be a stoppage. I think our item of greatest concern was the FEMA approval and the possibility of them, of them looking at this. But the information we've received back from our consultant is they are on board with this project, so, you know, obviously, you can mitigate wetlands, you know, there's a lot of other things that you can resolve. And the FEMA was probably at the top of our list. There are, you know, over twenty, thirty permits and various compliances that we need to consider. You're talking about groundwater permits and air permits and things of that nature that we're all, that we're working simultaneously right now.
Okay.
Mayor, could I ask Jim a question? It's been mentioned tonight a couple of times about Little River City has been brought up by the attorney, Benjamin here, but didn't you say that you have been doing some things and do you feel comfortable with what's going on or what's happening with your?
Well, yes, we had, we had started off, I guess I felt, on the right foot. We sat down with Mr. Dagel a couple of different times. We had really introduced him to a program in the Governor's Office of Economic Development where he could access some state funds to upgrade his pumps, to put tanks in. And then also, we wanted to begin some promotional efforts, but those efforts were cut off oh, here about two, three weeks ago. And so we're still trying. I talked to Mr. Dagel last week, but things have come to a slower pace and seeing a legal representative here tonight, I think I know the reason why.
Okay, thanks, Jim and Daryl. We have another gentleman. Did you want to say some, couple of words?
Yes, thank you. I'm Jeff Peterson. I live on the south side of Pelican, Air Haven Road. I am a customer of Little River City. I'm friends of both John Dagel and Rock McGilvery. I told them, even though you are my friend, I will no longer be doing business if this road does not go through. I have a small fleet of pickups that are going through. I don't have fifteen minutes to go around to go to a convenience store that is inconvenient. I told them that they will have to change the name of their store to Little River City Inconvenience Store. I want you to keep that in mind, that, you know, I spend about twelve thousand dollars a year there. And me pulling my business, they're gonna feel it. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, I think if there's no other conversations, I am going to close a public hearing at this time. I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion purposes. Motion by Mike, second by Randy. Any questions, guys?
In interest of full disclosure, I need to disclose that I am an investor with one of my partners in the ethanol plant. I had this conversation with City Attorney Stanton Fox a few weeks ago. My ownership interest, what it means to me personally and my investment in the ethanol plant is so minimal that I feel like I can adequately still speak and vote on this act. But I didn't want to, do you know that I am an investor?
Thanks, Glenn.
Well, I'd like to disclose I'm not an investor there. And so I've tried to think of this thing really from a citywide standpoint, not, and really take out and really have no consideration as it regards Glacier Lakes Energy. Now, we'll tell you, certainly I'm concerned about the impact on Little River City. I know it's certainly a potential. I don't know what that is. I don't know how to quantify. I don't know how to measure it. But I look at the other issues that I've dealt with on the planning commission for years and we deal with on a regular basis here at a council level and things that we do not have solutions for. And one of those items is the railroad that goes through town. The railroad's very important to our community, but we have, I believe, it's seven access points from Highway, counting Highway two-twelve all the way up to Fourteenth Street. And every one of those gets blocked at times and every one of those stops traffic, and it happens on a regular basis. So that we're not talking about Highway two-twelve. We're talking about seven access points that cross the railroad. I don't know what those totals are as far as, I know Mr. Johnson had mentioned twelve thousand some odd hours. I, you know, I don't know how you compute that. All I know is when the train comes, that you can be at any one of those places and cars are backing up, turning around, going, and they're constantly going different places to get around the train. So we have, on Highway two-twelve being the biggest element there, we have for a long time trying to come up with a solution. And the overpass was something that was presented and rejected. and, and rejected by, I believe it was by the DOT. So our hands are tied. So it is what it is at Highway two twelve and certainly heading north. I also know, and I see Craig Atkins is here, I also know that we have other businesses that have looked to Watertown that would need rail service, and how do we add those and aggravate the problem that we would have then on Highway two twelve and those other six points north? How do we fix that? It's gonna get worse and worse and worse. I know the, it's been noted that we should keep the road open and cross those tracks. There's not a doubt in my mind, because I see what the traffic does on our seven points through, through the community, there's not a doubt in my mind that if those people that are using Broadway today have to stop at all these trains that are going across there, there's four tracks on each side plus one, so there's nine individual tracks you'd cross, they're not gonna put up with that. They're not gonna use the road. So, my thing is, is I look at the safety factor of, of the rail cars being retained in the community, along a residential area and a business area. I look at the benefits to the city as far as keeping the roads open to, to connect from east to west on, on the, the, from the railroad tracks, and I, I see aggregately, again, not knowing the Little River City impact exactly, I see a lot of benefits to the community that have nothing to do with Glacial Lakes Energy. There are benefits that we don't have the ability to fix right now in our community. This helps facilitate that, and I think that's a very serious consideration as we, as we look at making a decision here.
Any other comments?
I was one of the fellows that got caught on the railroad the other day, coming back from, I live on South Lake Drive, and I came there at five after one, and at twenty-five after one, there were, I'm not sure if it would be forty cars on each side, maybe, I don't know how many, I didn't count them, but people were backing up, turning around, going the other way. It really is an issue for the community, I think, when you get stopped. I think about our fire and police, if they were to get a call, and, and it happened to be one of the many times that the train crosses, I, I think it's an issue for us that we really have to look at, and I, I wish Jim would've had a different answer for us tonight on Little River City, because I feel bad if we have, if we have a place that's going to be that badly interrupted in their business, but I think a lot of the other people are interrupted with this constant traffic and police and fire and so.
Thanks, Dan. Anybody else?
Have we addressed the bridge issue?
Yes, the bridge issue has been taken care of. Okay, if there's, oh, go ahead.
I, I guess as I, as I look at this, I, I cannot be concerned about the, the safety issue down on Twentieth Avenue, and there's no doubt that that will get worse. I wasn't aware, that was a bad corner until this whole conversation has come up the last few months. That is, that is a concern of mine, but I also see that as being a separate issue that we need to resolve one way or the other, whether or not we close South Broadway or not, but I am concerned about that. But as I look at the, at the, at the potential net benefits to the community, I feel bad that there are gonna be people hurt by this, but I feel like it is definitely a plus for the community, and I think you need to realize that the process that we have gone through, we have had, what, two or three work sessions? The planning commission dealt with this. There was a neighborhood listing meeting hosted by Glacial Lakes a couple of weeks ago that, by the way, was very poorly attended by the, by the neighborhood, that, but my point is that the process, this is not something that was a slam dunk from the very beginning. It's been a thorough process that we have all been involved in. I really will, will say, I've appreciated the public input that we have gotten on this. I'm on the council a short time, but I've gotten more comments on this, plus and minus on this than any other issue that we've been exposed to, at least in my short time in the council, and I do appreciate those public, that public input, but I feel like I, I do need to vote in favor of this closure.
Okay. I think, gentlemen, I will, at this time, look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, number eight. Ordinance number sixteen oh two, creating a bond fund and levying taxes for the payment of general obligation bonds. This is a second reading on this. Do we need to open the public hearing? Okay. I will, Shelley, if you wanted to say a couple of words on this?
I really don't have anything to add from the last meeting. It's just basically an ordinance that says when we, if, and we refund these bonds, we're gonna do, just like we have, put it in a separate fund and have a debt covenant of a hundred and five percent, so, nothing changes.
And there's a big savings on this.
Yes.
Hundred ninety-two thousand some odd dollars.
Yes.
So at this time, I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Don, second by, by Dan. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number nine was polled. Number ten, first reading of ordinance number sixteen oh three, amending section two point zero one zero three and two point zero one zero three A, regulating the permitted times for sale and consumption of alcohol within and for the city of Watertown. This, what this does is it, it brings all the times back together so that the restaurants can serve alcohol at eleven AM as well as selling liquor at eleven AM, so that's all it is, it's just a first reading on this particular one. This will come to you next month, or towards the end of this month, I'm sorry, next, next meeting. So we'll move on to number eleven. Consideration of lease agreement with Yamaha through Evolution Powersports for the use of a UTV by the fire department. Doug, did you wanna touch base on this for us?
I would, thank you, Mayor, Council. We had, we had looked into this a little bit, and the Watertown Police Department also took advantage of this great program that's put out by Evolution Powersports and Yamaha, given us a, a lease option on a, on a UTV, a utility vehicle. If, if, with your consideration on allowing us to accept this, we would use this vehicle for a lot of special events, so we could use it in EMS, we could use it in training, also any special events, rodeos, things like that, probably a lot of applications that we'd use that for. Also, out at our training center, we could use that to, to, out at the training center, going down to the, the station, down the hill to the training center. Also, we'd also use it possibly on a little bit, a bit of brush fire application on some small fires, getting equipment into hard to get areas, wouldn't be used as a main vehicle, it'd be just a, a resource, the crazy hills, whatever it's called, back in there when we have a hard time accessing something, we could use that vehicle, so that would be a, a great asset and something that we'd never be able to, to justify without, without a program like this.
Perfect, okay. So what I'll do is I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Bill, second by Bruce. Any questions you have for Doug? Hearing none?
No.
Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Doug. Number twelve. Authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement for engineering service with Austin Engineering for the bridge rehab project in the amount of twenty-five thousand. I just wanted to touch base on this a little bit. Shane wasn't sure if I was gonna talk or not. This is for the bridge that we're talking about, Little River City. What we would be doing is asking for the permission to hire Austin Engineering, since it is our contract, but the Glacial Lakes will pay for the cost of it. We would not sign this until we know for sure that the days are, are passed from what you just passed here this evening. Does that make sense to all of you? So I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Mike, second by Don. Any questions on that? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number thirteen. Authorization for mayor to sign documents related to the state water resource management systems grant for the flood control study resolution sixteen nineteen. This is what we just discussed in length at the work session, so I will look for a motion in a second for further discussion. Motion by John, second by Don. Any questions on this? This, in case you didn't have a chance to hear the, the work session, we are receiving two hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars for this particular grant. So, if there are no questions, I'll look for council action.
By accepting this grant, we are making the commitment to our half though, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Which is the, the equivalent amount, the same amount.
The remaining amount, and then, of course, we are expecting that we'll be going out to the Compesca Chapter Water Board and asking.
To get some funding there, too.
Yep. Okay, so I will look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Authorization number fourteen for the mayor to sign a D-Tour agreement with the Department of Transportation for the Highway eighty-one reconstruction project. This is also another, another one that we just watched thoroughly and listened to Shane in the work session just a short time ago. So I will look for a motion in a second for further discussion. Motion by Dan, second by Mike. Any questions that you have for Shane? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This one here, number fifteen, is interesting. It's a consideration of abatement of property taxes not recommended by the Connington County Director of Equalization, which is tax exempt. Shelley, do you wanna, do you wanna take this one for us?
I can. It, it is an unusual situation. I did talk to Shawna Constant, and she said it's never happened in the fourteen-plus years that she's worked there. Basically, it's a new church, and by law, they can apply for tax exempt status because they are a church for property tax purposes. The deadline for that, and they have to apply every five years, the deadline for that is November one. The property that they purchased was closed in December, so they missed the November one deadline. She does not have any recourse to that, so when they brought in their request, she could do nothing but say that she does not recommend it. Unfortunately, it's, it's just a, basically, they, they missed the cutoff by a month, and she had to do what she needed to do for her job, but because this is an abatable item under state statute, both the city council and the county commissioners can consider this abatement request and approve that abatement and, and go forward with that. So, I can open it for questions before I make a motion. I know it's unusual and there might be some questions, but if you need any clarification before you make a motion, we can sure do that.
Why did the county not recommend it? Was there justification?
Because they, they had to, because it was after the November one date, so she, she could not go ahead and accept that.
Okay, so I, I got that, is their policy, then their policy is they hold to the dates?
Right, and so then it would take your approval and the county commissioner approval to override that. She doesn't have that ability to.
Is it coming to us first, Shelley, or did it go to county, or county commissioners?
No, it'll go to the commissioners, I believe, next, either tomorrow or next week.
Shelley, was there any other concern on the fact it was late?
No, no, they, they are eligible for it.
They are?
Yes.
Shelley, you said it closed on December, so...
The, the property, the purchase, the sale of purchase closed in December.
Oh, I, I thought, okay.
Yep, so they didn't, they missed that deadline.
Okay, so I will look for a motion in a second for, for the discussion. Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Glenn. Any other questions?
Is this, is this building, was it a church or what?
No, it, it was, it was, yeah, so, yeah.
That's the building that it would be in?
Right, and normally, if, if they were a church and they bought another building, the tax exempt status would just go with them, but they were a new church and so it, it did not, just kind of a...
This particular church was meeting up at the school, and then they bought that farm credit building down there, and it's called The Bridge.
The Bridge, yep.
I believe is what they are.
So, just so I'm clear, the, the motion is to allow the abatement. Is that correct, the motion in the second?
That's correct.
Just wanted to make sure.
Shelley, I have a question. If, if this were to get approved, what is the risk? What else does this bring forward or other situations like this?
Really, nothing, because they, they will, they are accepted for it, and they have already done it for the next year. They will get approved every five years when they do it. There really is no ramifications. They just unfortunately got caught in that deadline.
Wait a minute, I, I'm, I'm probably being dense here. What is our motion on the floor right now?
Your motion will be to approve.
To allow the abatement.
To allow the abatement? Okay.
Right.
Okay, are we all good on that? All right. No, I just wanted to make sure we're clear on, on what that motion is. So, if there's no other discussion, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number sixteen. Consideration of bids received for the Upper Big Sioux Watershed Amdal Wetland Complex Project. Roger, glad to see you. You must've been hiding behind the, the pole. I didn't see you over there.
I know exactly where it's at.
Okay.
Um, just to give you a real brief overview of the project. Spencer, can you hit this? Yes, maybe? The Amdal Wetland Complex covers about twenty acres up in Grant County, Lower Township. The, the purpose of the project is to remove one old township bridge, replace it with a small dam, build a second dam down below, and a couple of little check dams for crossing purposes. This will retain, oh, I think, our total acreage of water retained is somewhere in the eight, oh, eight and a half acres of wetlands and eleven point seven acres of water retention up in this area. The reason why we think this is a fantastic project is that this area does drain about nineteen hundred acres, almost two thousand acres comes down through here. There are a few feeding operations and calving operations in the area, so anything that drains off will come into this system. The solids will have a chance to drop out, get used by the vegetation, and then it'll eventually pass to the, the Big Sioux River, which is about a thousand feet below, below this. The, the bids that we received for the project, the engineer's estimate was at two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and our, the bids received ranged from a hundred and eleven up to two hundred thousand dollars. Clark Engineering did the engineering on it for us, and it is our recommendation that we accept the Bates Construction as the low bidder at a hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred, six dollars and forty cents.
Okay, Roger, thank you. What I'll do is I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Glenn, second by Randy. Any questions you have for Roger?
Roger, 'cause we've traded some emails on this. Explain, how is this paid for? Who, who pays what portion?
Through the watershed project, we get grant funds from the EPA, and with this particular project, we're in a fifty-fifty cost share, so fifty percent of these funds will come from our budget and our riparian area line item, so to speak, and then the rest will come from the owner and other donators.
And is that, is, is the share coming out of your budget been accounted for in the budgeting process?
Yes.
So it's now like a real, or an additional allocation?
No, this is all in our three-year grant process.
Roger, the study we just talked about, you know, we just voted for to put money aside, is this going to be some of, something as an option they might have is to put these smaller dams, if that's what they're called, in?
Which study are we talking about?
No, Dan, I don't think I wanna go there. That's, that's a huge issue there between the small dams and the big dams.
This is a water quality project.
Exactly. This is just to make the water clear coming down into the river. Yeah. Any other questions for Roger? Hearing none, I will look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Number seventeen. Consideration of the revised storm water management program and annual report. This is another issue that we just had quite a bit of extensive talk with Sarah this afternoon or this evening. I will look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Don, second by John. Have you got any questions? If you do, Shane could answer them for us. Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number eighteen. Authorization for the mayor to sign the two thousand fifteen MS four annual report. Shane, did you wanna touch on that one? See, you didn't, I didn't forget you, man.
Actually, that, I have no comments on that. That's pretty straightforward.
Okay, so I'll look for a, a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Mike, second by Bruce. Any questions on the MS four? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number nineteen. Consideration of bids received for the sanitary sewer replacement project. Shane, did you wanna handle that one?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Mayor. Uh... On February 23, we took bids to complete the sanitary sewer replacement project number 1608. We received five bids. J&amp;J Earthworks was, of Millbank, South Dakota, was the, submitted the low bid of $489,050.63. This was 16% higher than the engineer's estimate of $420,349.10. The other bids received ranged from $501,450 to $548,427. So, what we did is, of course, we checked those, make sure there aren't any errors, and, and there weren't any. So, we're bringing it forward to you for recommendation to award. I just want to talk about the budget a little bit. We did do a little bit different approach to this project. So, about $145,000 of this project is going to come out of the mill and overlay budget because we're enhancing these streets rather than just putting a big patch in the middle of them. So, so we're kind of thinking ahead and making sure that we don't have to go back in here and do something to the street in a couple of years. So, so $145,000 of work could come out of that budget. The remaining $344,000, some odd dollars, will come out of the wastewater sewer department funds for this type of project. It is over their annual budget of $325,000, but they have enough cash reserves to cover the difference. So, they recommended that we proceed with award on this project. Any questions?
What was the biggest difference off the, or the engineer's estimate?
You know, I can't say. We try to guess how many, what the cost per linear foot are, is going to be on a project like this. And sometimes there's something that might tweak that or, or not, but it's hard to, to know why the difference in the budget.
Okay, Shelley, I, I was off in another world. Do we have a motion? Okay, I need a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Don, second by Bruce. Any questions you guys?
Where does the additional dollars come from then?
It said they were going to come out of the overlay.
No, cash reserves from Sewer Department will cover their overrun and budget.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. It's crazy, you need air conditioning in the first week of March, isn't it? Number 20, consideration of bids received for the 15th Street Northeast Project. We did discuss this on the work session again, I will look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Glenn, second by Don. Is there any questions beyond what we were asked earlier, or if you want to reiterate anything? Hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, motion carried. Consideration of change order number one to the contract with McLaughlin Schultz for the 15th Street Northeast Project to correct an irregularity in the bid form. I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion.
Someone.
Motion by Randy, second by Bill. This one here was also discussed on the work session. It really doesn't change the bid at all, it just changed the unit price. Am I correct?
That is correct.
You guys got any questions on that? Hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Authorization, number 22, authorization for mayor to sign an agreement for engineering services with Austin Engineering for the construction phase of the 15th Street Northeast Project in the amount of $35,288. Shane, did you want to touch on that?
All, all I need to say is this is what, we would hire them to do the inspection and then testing fees to complete the construction phase of this project.
Okay, so I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Mike, second by Dan. Any questions on this?
For now, that's just going to pretty much just dead end up there?
The, the north end of the project will be the entrance to the new recreational center.
Shane, does it, would it behoove us to, from an engineering standpoint, you know, the, the soil testing, et cetera, does it, are there any efficiencies to be gained to, to do that all the way up to 18th Avenue, 18th Avenue North?
I, I...
And then westward as it would, is there any efficiencies to gain to get it just all done in one fell swoop and then do the construction phase of this and monitoring?
Well, there are no tests. Although the testing is just to construct this portion of the roadway, we don't have a budget to continue the road up 15th Street and 18th Avenue.
Well, when, when he asked the question of testing, are you, are you also looking, when they do the work, that the, that the base is strong enough, the base is set? That's what you're doing, is it not?
Correct, yeah, it's density test, it's making sure the materials that you put in for gravel base are the right materials. Concrete testing for the curb and gutter, those kind of tests.
Do they tell us what type of testing they're doing? Do they use the nuclear, or do they use the old can, what are they doing?
You know, I, I assume they use the nu, because that's the most common method of, of doing it nowadays. The old sand cone method is, is a little archaic. You know, there are certain projects that do require the sand cones, like a lot of state projects still do the old methods. But, I'm assuming we're using the best technology available for this. And again, we've had to pare this project back. We originally asked to have it bigger, but we just couldn't budget to get it all done. So, we pared it back into what was a reasonable chunk. And we'll come forward with budgets for continuing this work in the next year or so.
Can, can you guys remind me when we purchased that property and so on, was any of this cost shared on the, to the east side, or how did we have, how was that done?
Yeah, we have, we'll have, have to enter an agreement with Hosanna Church, for example, for them to pay their portion of the project. And also, we have an agreement with Mr. Oris, who owns the property north of Hosanna Church, that he'll also receive a portion. And then, of course, he'll be included in costs for the extension of 15th Street North and 18th Avenue.
Yeah, I thought I was saying we had some kind of fixed number though that we locked in for him at the time, didn't we?
Yes, yeah, we do, it's all in a contract, there are fixed costs there. Any other questions? Hearing none, I will look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number 22A, first reading of ordinance number 1604, amending the zoning districts. Can you put that up Shane? Zoning district boundaries by rezoning Little's First Edition from Iowa Light Industrial District to C3 Highway Commercial District. I will tell you, Shane is bringing this up. What we're looking for is that on the northeast corner of this particular lot, we are looking to increase the C3 by 40 feet. Everything else is C3 there, and the red, and the purple, or blue, whatever color that is, that is Iowa. We need to slide that up 40 feet to get the, the plat correct that, that is coming through. Here this next, well, I think you have the signatures now for the plating.
I have the paperwork, yes.
Okay.
All the way across or just to the east portion?
Just down that east portion is what we're going to do. They are also coming back, we just saw today additional plating of the whole process on, on the north of that. We also saw through the Morris property to the west, they've come in with plating further, further west. And then also the Cohoes show plating with roads connecting to 26th, connecting 8th Avenue on the bottom and to the top. And this is exciting stuff.
The idea is that this most likely is all going to be C3, once this plating is all done anyway, right?
That's exactly right. We don't want any industrial on there.
And just for clarification, they're in concept plan phase only, not, not, we're not even close to plats yet.
Right.
Concepts are, are being developed, which is good.
And I wanted to be clear to you guys, because you know, we, we don't do a lot of administrative plating, but we are going to administrative plat the one lot down there. Take that pool cue down there and show them where it's at. Down a little... Right, right there. We're going to administrative plat that within the next two weeks so that this project can get moving. Y'all okay with that? Okay. Good. So, as I said, that's first reading, we'll bring this on to the next reading. Any old business that we need to discuss? Hearing, hearing none, I'll move on, any new business we need to discuss?
Mayor, I've got just one, it's a minor issue, I think, and I saw John back there in the corner. I was just wondering if he could step up for a second. We, we had...
Yeah, he's kind of a small issue, so...
Yeah, no, it's, it's not a big thing. I just want to say thanks to Johnny, gave me a tour with one of the architects from JLG of the community center the other day. We walked through both levels, or all three levels, whatever we got out there now. But, I did notice a couple of things and there was just one thought I had. And I, and I don't know if it's necessary or not, but I did hear in, in our process of, of design, you know, that there were some concerns regarding floor space or, or deck space, I should say, in the pool area. One thing that we, when I was there, John and I discussed was the potential perhaps for some additional space where we put a, a second deck. If you, if you've been up there and you saw where that official's deck is in the corner, if we extended that to the east a certain distance and put a deck up there, that would allow us for, for some more, for some more space. We'd have to have probably some sort of stair access unless we went...
I think, Bruce, if I may, I think what I would recommend is the next time that the architects are in town, when Adam is here and, and the group is put together, I think maybe that's a, a great question to pose then.
Well, and, and that's a, not a bad idea, but the reason I want to bring it up tonight is because even if we didn't want to do it now, we may want to consider footings for supports for that deck. It'd require a little more engineering and a little bit of cost. But, if we don't do it now, if we decided we wanted to add to that deck space, it'd be a lot more expensive, a lot more difficult, because then we'd have to go through the, the floor of the pool and, and then put it in. That would certainly disrupt the use of the pool for a period of time. This way, we could put in the footings if nothing else, if we decided that was something that we think is, is needed. The only other issue, small issue, was the, I noticed the trim, the cap across the top of the sheet metal appears to be bent and oil canned and, to me, it doesn't look good. And I think that needs to be addressed and fixed or replaced, in my opinion.
And I'm sure Pitts will, Pitts will, will look at that for us. And I think that's a good point to, to bring up. Onto another question, we don't know why you're up there.
Well, I just, I just wanted to see what John, the reason I asked John to come up is because he and I discussed this and I wanted to get your thoughts.
Bruce, I did bring it to Adam or Barnett or Architect and that, and he has not gotten back to me about the footings. I did not talk about the, the outside of it, of the, the cap of it, but I talked to him about the footings and that, and he has yet to get back to me on that.
And the only reason I wanted to bring it up this soon is because if they put that concrete floor in, you know, then we got to go back to square one, so, all right.
John, what's the seating, what's the seating number for the pool?
For swim meets, 300.
300.
And that's what, when we were designing this, we asked the swim team, what's the number you need? And they just say, they said 300.
In Aberdeen? Could you have held that state meet? With that seating? I'm just asking, I don't know.
Couldn't tell you. You know, I assume we could because we asked them what they, what they needed, and they said 300, so... We would probably bring in portable bleachers, certain areas, if we could to, to accommodate more people.
I don't think the existing pool right now would seat 300, would it John?
We have the largest seating in the state.
Is, is there 300 there?
Yes, with the, with the cement steps as well as the chairs on top, yeah.
Was, was that at the Y?
The YMCA in Aberdeen.
Yeah, that, they wouldn't have 300 seating there, but the, the only, they don't need so much seating as they need space for people, because when there's different heat, everybody switches out and they rotate around. But, they need places for them to camp out, more or less, and that's...
They were very limited in camping this, which you probably know Bill, yeah. Which we would not have an issue. We don't now with our two gyms we have.
So, who won the game this afternoon?
Both, both the South Dakota teams.
Nice, all right.
Both about 20, both about 20 points.
1 o'clock tomorrow.
What's that?
1 o'clock tomorrow they play.
Really?
That's great.
Fun. Thanks John. Any other, any other new business?
I, I've, I've got two real quick items. First of all, kudos to, to Dan Albertson and whoever was all involved in putting on the Up With People. What a fantastic performance and experience for the community, so, my, my congratulations. And secondly, kind of heartwarming, coming in tonight, driving around Derby Downs, the airport, I passed two different parties. One was out walking a dog and one was out walking their kids, carrying garbage bags with them, picking up garbage along the way. So, that was kind of heartwarming to see.
I would also want to mention that I think Rob has left the building, hasn't he? He's got all three road sweepers out. Starting today, they're out in full force. So, we'll go, go ahead and pick up that first layer of gravel on there.
Any chance he can sweep my boulevard off that's got about an inch of rocks all over?
I know, it's crazy. Say, I'd also like to mention too, I don't know if you guys are aware of it or not, but Bruce and his brother, and there's another gentleman, Russ, is it Bruce? Russ?
Ross.
Ross, Ross? With an S?
Ross Lindgren.
Ross Lindgren. Invited us down, Chris and I went down to the Prairie Crossings, kind of over there by, by Garfield School. And they put on quite a show, he and his brother, they, they sang songs to these people and it was just a, a really nice time. So, thanks for doing that Bruce, that was very, very nice. Even though you were off key most of the time, but your brother was, your brother was great. I'm just saying, okay? No, you did a wonderful job. Any liaison member reports that we need? Executive session, I do need to go into executive session for contract negotiations and personnel. I, I don't expect any, anything to come out of this executive session.
Steve, before we go, just, we did meet again on the gun range and the excitement is still there for this whole thing. It's, there's just some peculiar things that are there yet that have to be covered, but it's moving along very quickly. I know I've had a lot of comments from people saying, let's get it done. And so, it's looking very positive.
There's good people there. So, I will look for a motion and a second to go into exec. I got Randy and, and John, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried, we are in executive session. Thank you gentlemen.